Good evening everybody, I would like to welcome members and the public to this evening's meeting of the City Council. And I will ask for a chat then. Welcome to the meeting.
Mr Mayor, City Councilors and members of the public, good evening. It's a privilege to be here with you, why don't you? But even my wife and I have just celebrated our golden wedding and decided that we should bring down from the lot a large bundle of letters which have been in existence for fifty-two years. From the time when we were both students in the Salisbury College and days very long before emails and when phone calls were very expensive, so we wrote hundreds of pages to each other when we were away for any period of time. We thought we'd better read these before our thingmires in case there was something in them we'd rather the children not know about. So we decided we'd read the word for word right through them. We're doing it over and over again at the time, very interesting. We had a bit of fun reading letters as well. Because what emerged in those letters was some very important issues that we debated with absolute openness and honesty and frankness knowing practically nothing about each other initially. We were very clear quickly to me that I was corresponding with a lady of real integrity who was humble, not self-opinationalised, but quite prepared to say what she thought even if that jeopardised our relationship right from the word go. And that was something most important. And thinking of words like integrity, truth, honesty set me thinking about beings such as ours here this evening and how truth, justice and integrity might wise be the absolute standard for our country's legal system, politics, morality and religious faith. Integrity to me means we are the same person in public as we are in private. It's revealed by who we are and what we do when no one is looking. It also reveals itself when there's no discrepancy between what we say and what we do. But there is a real change for us. We need more people of integrity, but in these days living out crucial qualities in a privately city with all the evidence of success like Cambridge, integrity is about attitude, motivation. This is where it gets stuck close and personal and can get very uncomfortable. The fact is that many, if not most, people want the approval of others and consequently don't want to be distinctive, in other words, to stand out from the crowd in what they say or in the way they live, unless it is of course to get their name in print or in some other way. Societal pressures are huge: peer pressure, social media, advertising, just the name three. And therefore, in order to sound loud the absolute measure of integrity, justice and truth, such people will find themselves having to swing against the cultural current of our day. And it's certainly in my opinion, in my experience, day by day, not in Asia, it's getting more difficult month by month, year by year. Following the old period in which post-modernism was the overall umbrella definition of our culture which we've been living, it's got suddenly worse and now the buzzword in several magazines and radio programs I'll be listening to the word now is post-truth. Let me just throw that out for that to come across it. It means there are some people who are politicians who shape society that are suggesting we leave truth behind or, let's put it this way, at the very least, put the objective facts to one side and rely on emotional responses in shaping public opinion and making decisions. And in my mind, that's nothing short of tragic. There's a strongly community question, I'm increasingly being persuaded to compartmentalise my faith. So I find myself in the position of dual citizen. Yes, I am certainly a citizen of the UK, I've never lived outside of England and proud of the fact. And as a citizen of Cambridge, I have a strong desire to be supportive of all you people who do as a council. But I'm also a citizen of the Kingdom of Heaven. Now, by definition, that means that God rule is supreme and over all authority. And every godly act, I believe very sincerely, moves us a little closer to the ultimate destination of life. I just want to conclude by quoting a prophet from a long time ago. The prophet Micah, that's seven hundred or say the round figures before the Christian era. The prophet Micah reminded God's people of what they'd been told through centuries. These were the words. He has told you what is good and what the law requires of you to do justice, to have kindness and to work humbly with your God. And if I need reminding of the way to achieve that status, I simply have to remember the words of Jesus Christ who said, 'I am the way, the truth and the light.' I guess for me, that means I'm swimming against the tide, certainly in the present period of time. How about you? As we further business tonight, may the integrity and justice clearly be prominent in all that we do.
Thank you very much. A few housekeeping notes. We are not expecting the fire alarm to go off. If it does, please exit the back and the front of the council chamber or the rear of the public gallery and follow the exit signs. For wheelchair users and those with mobility issues, please make your way to the safe waiting area on Peace Hill at side stairwell. Council officers will be on hand to assist. There is an accessibly usable sex toilet located outside the council chamber opposite the members' room. A truex machine and water dispenser are located in the corridor opposite committee room one. The council is filming this meeting and a copy will be available to view in the coming days. Can councillors speak into their microphones so that everyone can hear the contributions that are made? Could I stress, this is going to be a long meeting? Could I ask all councillors to be concise with their contributions and to show respect to fellow members? Thank you. Agenda item one, approval of minutes. Can I approve the minutes of the meeting that the council held on the 20th October and 22nd of November 2016, which can be found on pages nine to twenty-two? Agenda item two, mayor's announcements. Apologies. Apologies have been received from councillors Dryden, Gary, Hittkin, Holland and Perry. Could I ask if there are any further apologies?
Um, councillor George Pinnis, please have to go back, we will be coming in shortly.
Councillor Councillor George Perry, please.
Is that all? Thank you. Further announcements. Mayor's quiz. Thank you to all staff and councillors who attended the mayor's quiz on Thursday the 2nd of February. It was great to have the legendary Robert Osborne back as quiz master and a great evening was held at by Owen. We raised a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty pounds for my two charities, of which three hundred pounds was raised on the night with very generous donations. Last week, Ronzy Mill, one of my charities, had its own charity night in the Royal Hall and raised a further two thousand pounds. They had a great night and really appreciated the support and opportunity to use these facilities to host their night. Sticking to quizzes, I will be attending the Rotary Club's quiz night on Thursday the 2nd of March. I have two spaces left in my quiz team. If anybody would like to join me, please contact me, but I will warn you, I am terribly competitive. YMCA sleepout event. I will be attending the YMCA sleepout event on next Friday the 3rd of March. The aim is to raise awareness of the growing problem of homelessness and to raise money which will go directly to local YMCA accommodation services to help homeless young people. If you would like to join me in this event or take part in the sleepout, please contact this microphone for further information. Zaged thirtieth anniversary. This year, we are marking the thirtieth anniversary of twenty years ago. We'll be inviting the mayor of Zaged and their small delegation to Cambridge on the weekend of the 7th of the 9th of July. Details have been thrown out, but invitations will be sent out to all councillors to join us to mark this occasion. Now, we have a short stop for us. I would like to announce that councillor Charlotte Perry has had a baby, Stephen Edward Perry, on Tuesday and everything is doing fine. Declarations of interest. I would like to ask members to declare now any interest in the items on the agenda before us this evening. Members are reminded that they can declare interest at any time during the meeting if anything occurs to them during the debate side.
Icebox Street recommendation, we have local students stay with us. Just in relation to both nations of all rights. In relation to the HRI budget, small point of irony, Galloway from the council and that's one of the line items. So many to what councillor Ron said, I don't know if I'll have the motion to turn the motion to go to the high press.
I also want to counter that Galloway to the council.
Don't forget, you can still declare your wishes on the council's mind as we're working our way through the debate. If not, we'll continue. Agenda item three. I understand that the following people wish to address the meeting. Anthony Carpen, Kelly Green, Amy Tugson and Mr Targill. There is an overall time limit for public questioning of thirty minutes, including the time taken by responses to questions, but this can be extended at my discretion. I'm not feeling very discretionary this evening on board. Each speaker must address their comments to the chair of the irrelevant committee or the relevant executive councillor. Each question or statement must be limited to three minutes, with a further two minutes for a supplementary question to connect on something that has been said by the councillor. I will just, while we talk regarding public questions, I'll just remind councillors, when speakers have thirty seconds left, I will be ringing the bell. The next time the bell rings, it means your time is up. So we're all clear, good? Would Anthony Carpen please come forward to ask his question?
Good evening councillors, I'm taking this question, all about air pollution, for a few reasons. The first one is the quality of air in Cambridge is now so bad down by the Royal Commission to ride on all of these bad boys. Steroids, they're not good for me, they have horrible, horrible side effects and I don't want to be on them. It also coincides with an answer given by Cambridge County Council who said they have no legal powers to do anything to improve air quality. Also, air pollution dissolves our statues and buildings. You only have to look at the church I was baptized in, the Church of English Martyrs on Piltover, to see the damage that's been done. And because I want statues of councillor Florence A. Keynes and councillor E. Hardrick on the church who lives outside of Guildhall, I don't want them to be ruined by the poor air quality. Fourth, the city deal, putting electric motors under non-needs for solutions to transport. This is something that's coming up again and again. So really what I'm looking for now with this question is to find out what powers and duties the city councils and district councils generally have. So my questions are, one, what legal powers do the Cambridge City Council have to control air pollution and improve air quality? And secondly, what automatic legal mechanisms give in, in particular, which compel the city council to take action when air quality falls below a certain floor or pollution is too high, for example, public health brands? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Carpen. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr Carpen. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for submitting your question in advance, so that gives, I mean, as a councillor, also officers, a chance to check every number of things. And also thank you for recording the response from the county councillor officer. Sorry, I'm changing the page, sorry. Because that is actually quite important for me as well, I definitely apply. Obviously, with the mayor's discretion, in relation, I'll answer my part, but there's a city deal around there, so maybe you'll start moving on to the councillor for that part. If everyone could excuse this, it's going to be quite a long-winded pie. There should be a lot of new information, but at the end, the public will have a little bit more insight. Now, the role for local authorities in relation to air quality is followed. So local authorities in the UK have responsibility under the local air quality management, the LAQM, legislation to review air quality. Where concentrations exceed national objectives, measures should be put in place to reduce emissions and be reported in the local air quality action plan, the AQAP. Most such plans are designed to address difficulties in complying with national objectives in relation to pollutants, the main two of which are, I'll tell you, Cambridge. Typical measures to reduce emissions were local sources in good traffic management, the encouragement of uptake, clean vehicles, an increased use of public transport along with more sustainable transport methods such as walking and cycling. Such measures will also, in theory, reduce emissions of some of the worst pollutants that we have in the city. Use of smokeless fuels during the gushing of domestic combustion is also important as a string of production emission controls. The increased use of biomass fuel to meet renewable energy targets may give rise to increased public pollution, so on and so forth. Planning and development controls are also another key facet of the council in relation to air quality and it's important the local authorities work to the best they can to reduce concentrations into the hotspots. Cambridge declared an air quality management area, AQNA, in 2004 for the ease of the annual concentration of nitrogen dioxide. This remains in force, Cambridge City Council subsequently produced an air quality action plan with South Cambridge Air Council, which came into force in 2007. This plan is currently under active review in light of new guidance issued both 2015 and again 2016. Now, in terms of legislation and guidance, enabling legislation is contained in the Environment Act 1995, Part Four, Section Eighteen to Ninety-One. In essence, Cambridge City Council as a district authority has a duty to monitor and report on the state of air quality in relation to prescribed pollutants and produce an action plan to tackle any exceeding of that jeopardy. The results of monitoring and review are reported back to central government annually as has progressed made on the state of action in the AQAP. The role of both district and county councils in low air quality management have recently been clarified in new guidance, and this is where it will be exactly quite interesting, was the new guidance, the AQM, P16, is that as in previous years, district authority that has sole responsibility for producing much of this report, that report now has to be signed off by both county and public health bodies. So the officer responding to your question was actually wrong to say the county councillor, for obvious reasons that everyone here knows, mainly that we are not transport authority, we are not in charge of roads, has quite an active role in relation to air pollution. The analogy when councillor Tomlin, certainly councillor, very good in the question, to answer the lines himself about pollution relations, we've got these on the family, remember? And the analogy that both myself and also councillor Kit, when he was in my role before, before Tuas Over, was that the way to understand is that we essentially walk air quality, but many of the elements of the leaders, we do not have control over, what we do have control over is all the leaders. Now, the Clean Air Acts, which cover the control of darks, may be designed to deal with under strength of cold and wood burning alongside some large oil production, that's one of the key things. Local authorities pollution prevention control, certainly industrial processes which are emissions to air, require authorization by the local authority, planning controls, obviously covered by the council property, policy in the local plan, require air quality assessment for certain levels and country requirements within the AQNA, which is formally the eventual local plan in air quality. It's important, bear in mind, this is not discussed in the budget, and one of the key things that I would honestly say every councillor there probably agrees on, is that we need to bulk up our air quality. And that's one of the things that is on there, which is short of, to do exactly that relation to planning and obviously monitoring air pollution in Cambridge. Now, the transport authorities, which in case Cambridge City Council, is obviously Cambridge County Council, may use the Transport Act 2000 to introduce road use and charges and schemes on basis of vehicle admissions. Now, in summary, Cambridge City Council have a duty to monitor and view air quality relating to pollutants prescribed by central government under the national air quality objective. Where objectives are not being met, Cambridge City Council have a duty to work in partnership. And that's crucial for this, because as people will accept, even the county council cannot necessarily compel, for example, bus companies, since they're legally to take up clean engines and so forth. Where objectives are not being met, we have a duty to work in partnership with relevant authorities to produce an air quality action plan in reference to national air quality objectives, compliance with both national objectives and EU values prescribed to remain responsibility of the Secretary of State, in this case, that is the Deputy Minister. Now, Cambridge City Council met all of their objectives to submit reviews, assess its mandate, action plans and touch with one with the most plans and satisfaction of the Secretary of State since the introduction of the local air quality management related legislation in 1998. Now, if I could just quickly finish with this, Mr Mayor. In Cambridge Yorkshire, there are several main sites which ceded meetings for air pollution, this year it's down to five. Now, a lot of that is obviously in relation to, a whole range of factors beyond necessarily the direct or indirect control influenced by council. But the action, what's now happened, changed from 2005, 2015, 2016, is we now have an action plan steering group which meets continually to talk about air pollution. Now, you have to look at what's within the realm of councillors within this room in relation to air quality. So what have we done as a council, or Mr Mayor, or or anyone else apart from councillor Burke, that we have constantly looked at the air quality of taxis here in the local authority? We have capped certain taxis here in Cambridge. We are currently in the process of looking at any effort we can make with our neighbouring authorities who are on the same obligations as ours to drive us, in South Cambridge, to harmonise taxi policies. Tonight, it may well come up, we have obviously the shared waste process that's going on. One among other the violence, I'm saying, and so in relation to that, one of the key not one indication for all this is we've reduced by ten or twenty thousand miles of HGV travelling on the streets of Cambridge by harmonising service. We have successfully, one followed taxi survey last year, which is now aborted back and the use of the train, which has enabled us to put the olive, the olive road vehicle, sorry, taxi bid for charge points around the city. Now, to bolster that, as you'll notice in tonight's budget, so we have also from our own finances capital bid for the, a bid for a charge point here in Cambridge and going forward for the next few years to show that even if we don't get the olive money, we, the city authority, are still committed to electric vehicles going forward. This enables us to make the licensing change, the whole range of subsidies now passed both by the statutory and licensing in relation to over the next few years, turning our taxis into hybrid electric rather than diesel. There's obviously the licensing of the air quality officer that I just mentioned. We also work quite closely with county and interestingly with the city deal and people like Adam Brook's state coaches on. Another key difference in the last few years is this authority have greatly increased the amount of electric vehicles we have here in Cambridge City Council under our own control to equalize our 0.09 in Adam here. And obviously, the theme of the agenda tonight, we hopefully will have one or two additions to that. Obviously, there's a review going on there to whole range of other factors, which are discussed in the running weekly committee. If I could just finish on saying, I honestly think that as one councillor speaks on, speaking in one voice on this matter, that we are committed to doing all we can within some trade power hours here in the district authority. I do believe that we have been trained under any administration by the fact that we are not unitary authority. And quite often, what we assume here from our issue to do with what we recognise as a serious problem here in Cambridge isn't always ethical by authorities, who have a number of other priorities, but I think that's a full answer.
Thank you. I can see some puzzled faces there during the course of councillor Robert Flores' answer. Though the constitution does limit the time and the length of the questions, because the answers to questions that executive councillors or chairs of committees may be needed to make may be quite complex, there is nothing in the constitution that limits the time for the answers. So under normal circumstances, I would have been ringing my bell at length. But I hope the defence of the public and councillors understand why the executive councillors and chairs get that latitude in the constitution rather than what's in. Mr Carpen, do you have something to add? Thank you. Kelly Green?
Good evening. Cambridge City City Health and Medical Profession Group are consulting the public about moving the current out-of-house GVE based Cheshington Medical Centre to the integrated clinic at Adam Brook. However, the data produced is criticised by the public and representatives of the government body Health Watch at a recent meeting. There are significant gaps in the evidence which I'm going to spell out on to them. The health inequality impact assessment does follow a recognised methodology. Nineteen for nine percent of all users of the Cheshington service are from the CB4 area, where there are the highest levels of deprivation. People from CB4 are also the most frequent users of the 111 service. There is no analysis of impact on people outside the city, for example, CB4 area. And there is no examination of journey times, how people reach the centre, the difficulty of nighttime travel, congestion, population growth in North Cambridge, or the effect of the new world extension. Despite the impact assessment saying main issues arising with the view are associated with impact on access and travel. The impact assessment conclusion of the proposal would have negligible impact if not quantified. There is no evidence to support the mitigation statement that GPs living would offset lower need. And other evidence about overcrowding in A A departments says it is usually due to shortage of bed spaces. It's rarely to do with people turning up at the wrong place. There is no evidence supporting the assumption that relocating service would help recruit of GPs for the out-of-house service in Cheshington. And there is an over-reliance of the concept of an A A hub recommended by the Royal College of Medicine, which elsewhere states people identify too easily with A A and are attracted to the uncapped public system. Campaigners in North Cambridge, myself included, believe moving the out-of-house service to Adam Brook will worsen the situation and leave Cambridge, an area with significant deprivation, and leave North Cambridge, an area with significant deprivation and existing health inequalities much worse on it. The assumption by the CCG in favour of moving the centre needs to be much more closely examined. In light of the many gaps identified in the consultation document, the lack of evidence, contradictions and inadequate health inequality impact assessment, please would the City Council formally contact Health Watch and request the consultation procedure beforehand?
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to thank Miss Queen for coming this evening and asking this question and giving the advanced side of the question in advance, that was very helpful. I'd like to deal with this question in two ways. First of all, sets out my views about what is proposed and also provides a spot to the matter raised about the consultation. The City Council, its role as a community leader, wishes to improve the health and wellbeing of local people. The proposal by the CCG to relocate the out-of-house service to Adam Brook Hospital, if it goes ahead, does seem likely to result in reduced access to the service by local people living in North Cambridge, and now, as Miss Queen mentioned, with health inequalities related to the rest of the city. So I am deeply concerned about the positive and negative consequences of this proposal in making worse these health inequalities. It is clear to me that the NHS, not just in Cambridge, but across the country, is experiencing a crisis in A and E. I understand that this proposal is in part a reaction to the crisis intended to reduce pressure on local A and E services. I fear that this proposal could act as a template for what could happen to other health services in the city and, more importantly, its impact on those who rely on those services when sustainability and transformation plan for the CCG area is fully established. I understand your local councillors have been working hard to convey your views as part of the consultation into the future of the out-of-house service and I am sure they will continue to press the case for retaining the service in Cheshington because of the value of revenues it brings to local people. I also appreciate the concerns you have expressed about the process of consultation being followed and that you feel information being provided is not robust enough to allow participants to come to a reasonable view when answering the questions set out in the consultation. I am happy to bring your concerns to the attention of Health Watch Cambridgeshire, whose job it is to make sure that the public are listened to when important decisions are made about our health and health services. They have secretary powers and can challenge health and care decision makers if the mission isn't working in the way that it should, or if they think a decision has been made where people have not been able to properly contribute. Unfortunately, I am totally unchallenged and confident on Health Watch that they do not have the power to stop this consultation. The formal control to sweeping function rests with the county councillors' health committee and although its role is not to deal with individual complaints, it can challenge commissioners in health providers' amount of services, any information given out to the public. I understand that whilst the health committee approved the consultation process that had met in January of this year, it added that it would keep an eye on proceedings. I would be happy to also therefore bring your concerns directly to the attention of the chair of the committee by formally writing to them and requesting that add its next meeting in March if actively scrutinised the way the consultation has been organised. We're going to view to potentially asking the CCG that be one if councillors are in agreement there have been forced methodology and evidence presented as part of the consultation. Thank you. Can you tell us something, please?
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, then Amy Olson?
Evening. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Cam voters community association. We would firstly like to thank the candidates for their proposal to cap more interview increases to two percent in orders for the public impaired disease policy, and we very much call this amendment. The resident voters on the can already made a large net contribution to council budgets, but only went above the cost of the very little services and facilities provided to voters. We feel it is unreasonable to ask voters to make even larger net contributions. To many voters, any significant increase in fees will cause financial hardship and make it difficult to grow our plan for the future. We are not party political and we have been grateful for support from councillors, several parties. However, we believe that this proposed amendment is sensible and just, and not at all to stand on. Can you assure me and my community that any increase in fees will be there and for it?
Ash Robinson? All right, thank you Amy for coming and asking a question, asking a question. It's the same similar question you asked in the construction resources committee, I'm afraid the answer is still the same. It's too early for us to take decisions before we've done a full assessment of the consultation that we carried out over winter. That's the way it has to be for now. We don't, I think it would be wrong for us to prejudge anything to take the steps at this stage. While I'm standing, I would just want to declare an interest of the campaign services out of the half of the City Council. I'm not making decisions at this stage. I can also, while I'm standing here, I send our congratulations to the voters community because I have your colleague Basil died this week, and he's a great character whatever I'm told, so I'll press on here about that. I look forward to working with you on the more issue of due course.
Do you have something, Amy?
Yes.
Uh, Mr Tyne? I like people like you. Then we move on. Agenda item four, recommendations of the executive for adoption. We now turn to agenda item four A on pages forty-three to one hundred and forty-eight, recommendations of the executive councillor for housing concerning twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen housing revenue account budget to be for. Does councillor Price wish to introduce his? Does councillor?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
Up to five minutes.
I'm sure I can keep.
Up to.
I'm sure I can keep to up to five minutes. And the HRA budget which I'm presenting tonight is actually a tale of two halves. On the one hand, the proposal's in the budget deal with the ongoing impact of the government's enforced twelve percent rent cut and the harsh welfare reform policies which continue to signal out social sector tenants to bear the brunt of the failed austerity regime imposed since two thousand and ten, first by the Tory Liberal Democrat Coalition and now by the Tories all by themselves. Our handling transformation programme looks the needs of our tenants at the heart of every budget decision taken and recognises that our tenant profile is changing. They are increasingly single or two-person house hosts. Around sixty percent have not been in employment and a quarter have limited long-term illness or disability. Thirty-nine percent are aged over sixty-five, and generally speaking, those we house are also increasingly vulnerable. In new lettings, a quarter to a third each year after those to whom we have accepted a homelessness duty. Through our budget proposals, we set out how we will protect the core services which are lettings and tenant management repairs and maintenance, income management, taking quality of life issues such as antisocial behaviour and supporting vulnerable tenants to maintain their tenancies and to remain in their homes as they age. Given the significant pressures on our budget from legislative changes, we look for efficiency and value for money and how to manage expectations on what services we provide through having clear policies that officers, tenants and indeed councillors can refer to. At this point, I'd like to pay tribute to our officers for their work on this budget, and not least because national policy change is so fast and so frequently that budgets are often rewritten over weekends and officers then have to consider the implications, good or bad, for our tenants of each change or policy reversal. It is good news, for instance, that mandatory pay to stay has been dropped, not just for its implications but for the costly administrative burden it would have put on housing officers for no benefit to our own budget, but also for the thousands of our tenants who would have faced worry and annual income reviews. It is also good news that Gavin Markle, the housing minister, confirmed this week that the high value levy would not be imposed on councils in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, although typically he did not do so before our budget was prepared. I continue to hope that eventually he will accept the damage the levy will cause to council far outweighs any benefit the government think they will get from it. As I said at the beginning, this is a tale of two halves, and if the first half is about coping with the damage from government policy, the second is about using the opportunities to evolution offers. This is neatly summed up in point seven of the recommendations, with a twenty million, up to twenty million pound a year new build programme for five years starting in twenty seventeen, partnering the devolution deal housing grant with our right to buy receipts to build hundreds of new homes. Let me be clear how badly this is needed. Not just because we continue to lose on sixty homes a year to write to buy and the pressure on our HRA account to spend more than seventeen million pounds we now hold in retained receipts or return them to the treasury with punishing interest rate. Not just because the one percent rent cut devastated our business plan and our new build plans, but primarily because those in Cambridge who will never be able to afford to rent in the private centre or even buy a home, they need social rented housing, and this Labour-led council has always put their needs as a priority for how we run this council. They are the reason we rejected a devolution deal which offered nothing for housing in Cambridge, and they are the reason we signed up to this one. I only wish that the Liberal Democrats had held out strongly when they were in power and their party was in power and they negotiated the city deal which promised so much for housing but delivered not a penny towards it. The benefits of the seventy million pound devolution grant will be immense. Only this week officers gave a member briefing to the devolution, on the devolution deal housing plans, which I was surprised to find that not one single Liberal Democrat councillor attended despite their professed interest in housing and where the plans for developing sites on the next two years were detailed. I'm pleased to say, for example, that through the additional money from the devolution deal, the plans we will be bringing forward for Anthony Way will not only reprove the twenty-three existing social rented homes but add further twenty-seven. I hope that all members of this council will give their wholehearted support to our HRA budget proposals. I move.
Thank you. Is there any debate? And you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would say I'd like to add my thanks to the officers not only for work on budget but for work on our amendment. It's a tricky and speculative time of year and it's all done very well. Now, I don't want to rerun the debate that we had at two weeks ago, just for the benefit of people here to see our cities and how they propose amendments, but I can accept generally the rating down of our proposals if we propose redirect funds for which the leading group have the plans, or if our proposals conflict with the priorities of the legal group. It's hard to accept very when neither of those things is true. So for those who are unaware of our post-amendment to the housing project, I'd just like to summarise. Firstly, it did nothing to underline any of the plans set out in the leading group's budget. Secondly, it was funded by cash, as would otherwise be to coin the expression languishing in a reserve. And thirdly, it was directed at supporting the maintenance of services to the most vulnerable members of our social term group, to coin an expression, the most vulnerable. So it's free money spent on protecting services to the most vulnerable with a ill effect on all other plans. What's not to like? Just one thing it seems different was proposed by us. So in housing services, we made a transformation programme, mannes itself as a loss of ten point two full-time for Brent officers. This number was known at the time at which we were considering this question, but the detail of the cuts, where they were forwarding housing services, how that would affect services, that detail was not paying, it was not paying to the community. And I was quite right because it hadn't gone through the consultation basis that was a necessary part of the implementation. But however, it did not stop members of the community rejecting the proposal that would safeguard to the lost offices and lots of firsts of supporting services to our most vulnerable residents. You have to ask yourself on what basis can the staff so confident in doing that? It's important and elements based decision, that's for sure. And the reason why this is so important is captured exactly by, as our executive councillor himself says, and the first word of that group's words on page fifty-two of our papers, where it is reported that the demographic of our social term group is changing rapidly and quite markedly. And more and more of our tenants are, as the executive councillor says, now highly vulnerable. So why can we not want to support it differently if we can? And the answer was given then, now is not the time. Let's see how our transformation develops, and we have the devolution money. If it's a problem, we can come back to it. Well, frankly, to quote the leader at the last council meeting, that's just below you. If now is not the time, then when is the time? Perhaps we can't, we just can't afford to fund this anymore, maybe that is the reason. Well, we can. The proposal we made was to shave a fraction, a tiny fraction, of the rate at which we reserve for the day when we refinance the debt to the HRA from twenty-five percent to twenty-three and a half percent. And the clear advice from officers on this proposal was that it would have a negligible, if any, effect on the ability of the HRA to refund, refinance its debts on acceptable terms. Negligible, if any. So it's a measure, it is a measure of how did the members try to understand it, but I was told by a member that my proposal was gambling the very viability of the HRA itself. Gambling the very viability of HRA itself more for later. So, Mr Mayor, a proposal we could fund for sectors for most vulnerable, the leaders identified and the means of meeting that need is also identified and yet rejected. Why? Because if you were to be accepted, they might find its way into a lethal, nor above another lethal. Some being wearing polio-keeping liberal Democrat, who take the afternoon off with chile artes, who's older than a pint and banana smoothie popper, strap on a pair of sandals and deliver a lethal to the people we are meant to be trying to serve. So, Mr Mayor, I would have thought well in implementing a transformation of housing services, how can I not? But I have one request. Have the members that voted down the amendment satisfied themselves that services will be better provided and maintained in the future to our most vulnerable tenants with fewer officers when the opportunity was there to rein back the job of the cuts? I wonder if they've shown that even after the debate, did they sit back and say to their loved ones, I may have reduced the chances of services being maintained to the most vulnerable, but that's one lesson that I'll have to learn.
Thank you. Is there any further? Can I call on councillor Price, who has the right to reply, which is to take it? And you have five minutes.
Five minutes? Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Not really, I, you know, I think that was probably playing out, as was said before, the same argument that was taken to housing scrutiny committee. The response was given, and councillor Avery rather has saved me the trouble of repeating it because he's told you why we rejected it. We stand by that. We stand by that. That, you know, you were doing this before everything was, everything was known and we wanted to wait, which is what we will do, we will review this, as we told you at the time, in September. We didn't feel it was necessary, officers didn't feel it was necessary to do either of those proposals, and we stand by them.
Thank you. I'll now go to the vote. Please, can I see all those in favour of your recommendations on pages forty-three to forty-five? All those who are? And those against? We now turn to agenda item four B on pages one hundred and forty-nine to one hundred and seventy, recommendation of the executive councillor for financial resources concerning the annual treasury management strategy statement, twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. Does councillor Robson wish to give a little comment?
I shall. On page one four nine, you will find an eight paper which outlines the requirements to approve the annual treasury management statement, asking you to approve the statement, an amendment to the council body this changes to the nature of treasury indicators. I would like to discuss that, S and R, and passing the amendments here, I would agree with the centre past this evening.
Thank you. Is there any debate? I'm troubled. Again, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, it falls to me again to remind members that parts we tend to nod this report through, it's most probably one of the most critical areas of the authority. It underpins what we will talk about later on this evening in relation to the budget and the financial proposals that this authority brings forward in this shape for the next twelve months. Now clearly, a key element of the treasury policy for an organisation like ours is what we would call asset allocation, how we allocate the money we have in terms of the investments that we seek to undertake, be that liquid assets such as bank accounts where we can get the money tomorrow, or illiquid assets such as the CCLA investment that we have. Now, I'm sure members when they were scrutinising this document in detail reached the conclusion that I reached, that I couldn't quite work out how much cash we have available to invest. And the answer is one hundred and twenty-four million, because I asked the officers that and they gave that answer in scrutiny in relation to this issue. So, as in scrutiny, I asked the officers if this could be highlighted in the report going forward, so we have full transparency of the funds available that this authority has to invest, so that we members understand where they're being invested and can. So I'd like to ask the attentive councillor if he could share with the chamber what is his strategy in relation to asset allocation, as set out in the Treasury report, and does he believe that the current balance of assets across the various asset classes is acceptable for an organisation of this nature?
Any other debate? Councillor Robson, you have the right to reply. Again, you have five minutes.
Thank you. We agreed after the industrial resources committee that it would be a good idea to have resources available in the future, and that will be done. In the meantime, I am satisfied with the allocation of that, but it is too simple in terms of state.
I will now go to the vote. Please, can I see all those in favour of the recommendations on page one hundred and forty-nine? That saves the time. Implementable sayings. We now move to agenda item five, budget recommendations of the executive for adoption. We now turn to item five A of the agenda, budget recommendations of the executive for adoption, pages one hundred and seventy-one to two hundred and eighty-eight. The rules that debate has set out in the constitution are included in your information pack provided. I will now ask the executive to present these budget recommendations. You have up to forty-five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Each year, the City Council produces a financial plan for the year ahead, our budget for Cambridge. In setting our budget, it's important to remember that, as with the whole of local government, we have very little control over our core income. Business rates and national grants are controlled by the government, which also restrict our ability to increase council tax. In response to this highly regulated control over core income, we have evolved a strategy which protects the council. which protects the council's financial future and the services that our residents rely on. Fundamental to the strategy is developing ways of running the council more productively and establishing ways which make us less reliant on government funding. In this way, we will be more certain to have finances to achieve our objectives into the future. In October last year, we produced an efficiency plan covering the next four financial years. That document took on board the vision and objectives this council has set and which need resourcing. It brought together and further developed a range of policies built up over the past few years to cut costs and enhance income. We now present a budget for the first of those years ahead. Producing the efficiency plan led to the government agreeing to provide the council with certainty as to the minimum grant and other support we would receive for the four years to twenty twenty. Now, while this is welcome, it must also be remembered that by twenty nineteen, the government will no longer be paying the council any more grants at all. In twenty thirteen, the main revenue support grant we received amounted to over twenty million pounds. By twenty nineteen, we will receive nothing. New home stimulus funding is also reducing, following the change announced by the government in December. And a combination of these cuts puts more pressure on the council's projects in the next few years. It demonstrates the government's intention that in order to fund income tax cuts for the rich, councils should be required to raise funds locally through the council tax and business rates. Those are both progressive calls to taxation, applied uniformly regardless of income, and the government's change to this call of taxation highlights the importance of the council's strategies of supporting those in most need and running the council as efficiently as possible. Over the last few years, we have been working hard to find savings, we've also developed our income and loot activities. These actions are essential in order to protect services our residents value the most and protect Cambridge residents who most need our support. Our efficiency plan tackles the need to deliver good services with fewer resources through six complementary strategies. Firstly, transforming the way council delivers services. We are focusing on what's important to service users and delivering that well. Sharing services with neighbouring councils where possible to reduce costs and to create stronger and more resilient teams of workers. Secondly, we're reducing the number of council office buildings. For example, later this year, we will have moved out of Holson House, which will then be sold. We will also have moved off the council letter site in Mill Road and relocated streets and urban spaces operations to a new place in Cowley Road. That move helps with the third strategy, which is investment in major capital projects. Now, these include redeveloping key council assets, starting with Palm Street, Park Up and Mill Road Depot. A range of smaller sites will also be developed around the city. Our fourth strategy is developing new enterprises as council businesses. Now, these include a new vehicle maintenance garage and fleet operation at Orrie. What we want to do is to get all departments thinking commercially and exploring income generating possibilities. Our fifth strategy is challenging the council's capital programme. The council has for some years had a large number of projects under development at any one time. We want to produce, to reduce low priority capital commitments by over ten million pounds and ensure that those schemes that do go ahead are well planned and delivered in a timely way. And then there's our sixth strategy, which is investing wisely, so it does not sit in bank accounts earning very little, but instead works to generate a better return for council tax payers. Since we took control in twenty fourteen, fifty million pounds, that's five zero million pounds, of underused council resources have been freed up for investment at much higher rates of return. That investment is going into commercial property assets and in new housing via Cambridge City Housing Development, as it is due, generating even kind of reinvestment while at the same time addressing affordable housing need. These strategies will enable us to continue to provide the wide range of services our residents depend on. We also have plans for new services and improving existing services. It's our vision to lead a united city, one Cambridge fair for all. This involves economic dynamism and prosperity combined with social justice and equality. It's a vision we will share and develop, working with our residents and partner organisations. Fundamental to our plans is our strategy to tackle poverty in Cambridge. Last October, we added two hundred thousand pounds to the sharing prosperity fund, and a further one hundred thousand will be provided with this budget to fund extra work on alleviating poverty. My colleague Richard Johnson, executive councillor for communities, will provide further information on the projects financed by this fund. The second major area of new work is in respect of climate change and sustainability. In that context, we have set ourselves a target of zero carbon emissions by twenty fifty. Our budget includes funds to install additional rapid electric charging points for cars. Where possible, electric vehicles will be bought when it comes to replacing any of the council's fleets of vans. An additional air quality officer will be appointed. Our climate change fund provides the money to work on the council's own buildings. And to take this further, we are topping it up with a further amount of two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to enable more projects to be run to reduce the council's carbon footprint. These projects include installation of LED lighting and improved boilers and control systems in council buildings, including this one, it is over two. Upgrading our properties with insulation and energy efficient coal or secondary blazing. Installation of photovoltaic panels on council buildings, and we're also continuing adding a small combined heating power station in this building. Another major active, area of activity is in tackling homelessness and poor accommodation in the private housing sector. This work will be further supported by a new post in the council's housing development agency, and the extension of Tamble letting service, which helps small scale local animals rent their property to local people who need a place to live. Kevin Price, executive councillor for housing, will explain more about this work and the additional resources we obtain to work with these people living on the street. Our work in tackling poverty, climate change and homelessness is key to our budget, but there are many other areas of activity which are being underserved, and my colleagues will provide further information. Our work continues for the whole Cambridge community. We are determined to do everything we can to avoid practicing frontline services and to deliver extra funding on our priorities. All of this is only possible due to our ambition, our financial provenance, and our determination to prioritise social justice. Our budget will help deliver more for our residents despite taxing funding and help deliver our commitment of one Cambridge fair for all. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson? Thank you, Mr Mayor. The recent Centre for Cities report showed that Cambridge continues to possess the most highly qualified workforce and the second lowest level of unemployment of any city in the country. That has to be broken. However, there remains, as a result of the torrid, torrid austerity agenda and the low wage, no opportunity culture which accompanies it, significant inequality in our city. The same report states that Cambridge was the most unequal city in the country in terms of income distribution. This council does not abide on the other side. We want a city that is fair for all, where there is equality for opportunity and where outcomes are more uniform. I am proud that this authority has bested one billion pounds in our sharing prosperity fund since twenty fourteen. The fund has, in difficult circumstances, produced good results in assisting in tackling poverty and inequality. For example, Monstard Fins, we have been targeting low pay by actively promoting the living wage with businesses and our universities. We have increased the number of apprenticeship opportunities offered by the council. We have saved families hundreds of pounds each year for our fuel and water poverty action plan. We have used childcare places and provided cut price access to leisure services to those on low income families, and we have supported initiatives to tackle digital exclusion. Our budget voted to reject an additional one hundred thousand pounds to the sharing prosperity fund, complementing, as councillor Watson mentioned, the two hundred thousand pounds charged up to week by the council last October. If council agrees to boost the sharing prosperity fund, we intend to start more rolling on a number of new projects which the additional monies will fund. First, promoting time credits and volunteering in our reading centres, happy in East Kensington, voting on a previous pilot project. Time credits, as well as promoting volunteer, can help maximise incomes and reduce costs for people, and can be deemed out to twenty venues across the city, from swimming lessons at our leisure centres to a theatre show at junction. Second, funding a project to build upon our successful cooking for families initiative, where identified vulnerable and low income residents and families are well aware to cook at workshops. Time to Cook will provide a further forty cooking workshops that will focus on the planning and preparation in cooking of lower cost healthy meals. Third, expanding our multi-agency free exercise program to enable anyone in the city deemed to be in financial need to take part, per curjemne only those in my eating service and army eligible. Fourth, further expanding our successful advice on prescription initiative, a collaboration of several G P D surgeons across the city and the citizens vice bureau, where it aims to address the wider determinants of mental health problems such as debt and unemployment and other welfare rights matters. Fifth, creating a new full-time post, an energy project development officer, which will investigate implementation of strategic initiatives to support fuel core homes. And sixth, an initiative to focus on reducing pension of poverty, in particular focusing on single older people living alone, those aged eighty-five and Asian women over the age of sixty-five. Councillor Seddon will talk later about another new project called Act Up, which will use a social theatre process to work with thirty young people living on low income in Abbey who are involved with the criminal justice system. We are currently reviewing our anti-poverty strategy, which informs the projects of funded by the sharing prosperity fund, taking into account the progress we have made since twenty fourteen and the challenges as far as by the Centre for Cities report that remain. Young come on this review, will be presented to the community centre scrutiny committee in the summer. So whilst Cambridge remains a two-tiered city, this authority will continue to do what it can to make a positive difference to the lives of those who feel they have no part to play in success of Cambridge and prosperity, joined by many. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, in the foreword to the budget councillors Herbert and Robertson lay out how the budget aligns with our strategic objectives, including tackling the housing crisis and the inequality that continues to shape the lives of many in Cambridge, and especially awards like in Kings Edges, where a third of the children there live in poverty. Given that Cambridge is the top performing district council in terms of housing growth, I often prefer to say housing affordability crisis, because, because it is just that, the lack of affordability, the rising gap between income and housing costs, that is that which drives the inequality between residents in Newland, for instance, and residents in Kings Edges, and which is particularly driving the increase in homelessness. Whilst the causes of homelessness lie in government, housing policy and welfare changes since two thousand and ten, the task of dealing with it falls to councillors. And this budget lays out a significant effort which Cambridge puts into preventing homelessness and supporting those who find themselves without a roof over their head. As with the housing revenue account budget, we must be flexible to respond to further government legislation, and here, the homelessness reduction bill is a good example of where we may find ourselves with greater responsibility but insufficient funding to carry out our duties. Officers actively bid for any external funding to support our aims, and I'm pleased that two recent bids have been successful. One for three hundred and ninety thousand pounds over two years to create a multidisciplinary street outreach team, which will be complementary to existing street outreach teams, to tackle entrenched brusque sleepers, often with multiple addiction or mental health issues. And one, on partnership with all councils, councils in the devolution area of seven hundred and fifty thousand as part of the government's trailblazer programme to prevent homelessness for those that. Our single homelessness service, supported by our own social letting agency, Tamble Lettings, has already prevented homelessness for three hundred and fifty single clients in the last two years. Now, this prevention work is vital in twenty seventeen eighteen, and our budget proposals continue to support these important services. Our homelessness prevention growth programme is entirely funded from the general fund, and this year, we will use over seven hundred thousand pounds to support our partner agencies in preventing homelessness and helping those on the streets. The grant programme in councillor Johnson's portfolio also gives important support to agencies who partner our efforts, and the sharing prosperity fund has begun and continues to fund many initiatives which help low income families across the city. There is little sign of a change in government housing or welfare policies, and so we must expect the pressure on our services to further increase. The budget proposals put before the chamber tonight are a significant investment in supporting our services on the face of swinging cuts, and again, I recommend those to the council.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, three areas of responsibility that I'll uncover briefly. In planning terms, the Conservative said that every council should have a local plan and approve up-to-date local plan, if only. We've been saying this chamber for the past three years, maybe longer, waiting for our plan to be approved. We hope it will be approved sometime over this year, there's no guarantee of that, but you'll see in terms of the budget, we have set aside further monies to facilitate where needs be, support for our local plan process and for the dealings with all the high paid barristers that various parties known to us all will bring forward at the Beret hearing is coming up in April and early summer. And we will have to argue our case strongly and with support if necessary to make sure that our plan does get approved. There is an awful lot of construction and development occurring in the city, and clearly those of you who have an eye on your applications realise an awful lot of applicants are coming, are coming in and are coming over the past year or will continue to do so. Cambridge is seen, in terms of the development of the industry, as a great train, and we are the guardians of the city, and we have to be aware those people are not only out to be good, the community for the community good, but they are out there to make, make profit. Uh, we have to balance the need for the community and the need for economic growth, and we have to balance those factors, our planning team are fielding that at the sharp end, and clearly are far less paid than some of their commercial counterparts, but we value them and we hope they remain with us and stick with us because there's an awful lot of change and a lot of opportunity within this council, particularly with shared service, with South Cambridge, there's an awful lot of opportunity to shape a greater Cambridge, and we will do some when necessary improvements and, and, and would facilitate the need to support that. In terms of, uh, transport, always smiling a bit when I say on the, the council's planning for transport, because clearly the transport is a county council responsibility, but we do have, what's the, a, a strategic role to assist them and the various colleagues in this chamber, assist, assist our fellow partners through the assembly activity and other avenues, including the forums we are, uh, support causes, contributing towards that. Uh, but in terms of transport, I know that recent sort of noise has gone, our colleagues at Shire Hall or some of the senior colleagues at Shire Hall suggest we should have a better cooperation and a more, uh, 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 add on a sort of a discussion relationship with, uh, Shire Hall counterparts, and we are welcome that, and sure South Cambridge members do as well, I mean. I mean, we need to get back to the days when we did have proper discussions about parking, on-street parking, sorry, off-street parking, so that local knowledge is imparted and placed upon that. In terms of car parking, I've had quite a few emails from members of this city, particularly those who attend church on a Sunday. I'm sure councillor Biggs will refer to that. But I would just outline the theory behind the car parking approach in terms of the pricing. One, and this is actually this is as a priority, we must have a car parking strategy placed as discourages long-stay parking. People complain about the cost of long-stay parking or that's the only other way to discourage it. It seems obvious to me, but obviously people still make their points and have their say on that. We want to maintain a value of money cost for short-stay parking. That's the reverse of that. We try to do that. We want to obviously increase people coming into the city at off-peak and less busy times of the week. That's why we agreed to reduce charges on Monday and Tuesdays. We're trying to release charges for the rest of the week, but at weekends. Clearly, everybody who comes to this city, in the city centre particularly, you can see how busy the city is at weekends. There's been an anomaly over the years whereby Sunday prices have piltered with Saturday. I've been getting a lot of comments and support for bringing that in line, for bringing Sundays in line. It's Saturday because people within the city are seeing particularly much different to what you see if you were to come into our city on a weekend, they see how different it's Saturday and Sunday. Yes, it would affect people who are used to paying a certain charge, but I can't see how we can differentiate between one group of people and another. If we increase charges, we increase charges, and it's been properly consulted, it's been properly discussed. And though, yes, there have been some sort of criticizing that proposal, we have had an awful lot of support for it as well. People do realise the point of trying to sort of distract congestion building up within the city at weekends. That's part of the reason why there's changes at the recording place. In terms of other matters, clearly, we do still have in our budget a mitigation fund for the A fourteen, not on effects. The mitigation fund is still in place, one point five million pounds. At some point, we will have to have a series of discussions within the council how will we best use that money because we want it to be used to benefit the city. That's part of our focus in the overall management package of the district council, but that will come back to this council at some other point, probably in the near future.
Councillor Smith?
Hello? Thank you. I want to start by paying tribute to the hundred and fifty members of our Streets and Open Spaces team who work so hard to make Cambridge such a great city to live in, as well as to our growing number of volunteers who are working with us. I want to follow this learning as snapshot, and I hope to do the very wide work with Service Justice. And it's really underlined by saying that we have a continued and strong commitment to all the areas that we work with. So I want to start with that commitment to our open spaces. As colleagues know, we have a 2016 to 2026 tree strategy, which aims to maintain or increase our tree cover in the city, focusing at the same time on having the right tree in the right place. And I'm very happy to say that we are on target to meet that strategy. We value our trees for baby schemes, and the uptake of the scheme has increased hugely over the last few years, with nine times more trees now being planted under that scheme than in the 2013 to 14 cycle. Given the growing success of the scheme, which we want to support further in this coming round, we are very keen to listen carefully to the arguments raised in the debate this evening about going to funding for our tree strategy. We will continue to pursue the tree strategy, which is about the whole city, not just about our council land. We're thrilled of the large number of trees that have been planted in and around Cambridge in recent years. I spoke before of our wonderful linear orchard project and our community orchards. And our new developments are contributing significantly with thousands of extra trees. At Great Nathan alone, some fourteen thousand trees have already been planted in the new developments, including the country park. Six hundred of those in partnership with local schoolchildren. We will continue to support the growth in tree numbers, which will of course help us to contribute to the council's wider sustainability agenda. And I just want to say that we of course also commit to replacing the trees that have been lost today, very sadly including some quite large ones as part of these storms that have been raging. Over the last years, we have built and improved, and particularly improved many play areas. And I have to say the Hector Peterson play area is in particular a favourite of mine, named as it is in honour of the schoolboy who was an innocent victim of the struggle against apartheid in South Africa. You'll see that we have on pages two six five to two six six, two F106 funded projects in riding way in Dittenfields, which are also to do with expanding our play capacity. In the last year, we've been delighted to welcome any exciting events to our public spaces, and these have been popular with locals and visitors alike. Our partner Cambridge Live has hosted events such as the Big Weekend and the Midsummer Firework Display, with almost ninety thousand people attending the North Pole event last year, with the new Big Wheel up wheel attracting around eighty thousand visitors. We will continue to support these events and have a review of open spaces planned for later in the year. We do not wish to be complacent about the way that we are running these events, and we're always seeking to develop them further in the right way. You will note that we're also planning land acquisition close to the Hunter Road Ferretorium. You can see that on page two six six. And that will also allow us to significantly improve our services. And obviously, that's an incredibly important area for us to be working on. However, perhaps most importantly, we have another budget this year which allows us to maintain our superb frontline services, keeping our streets and public spaces clean and pleasant, and keeping this beautiful city even more beautiful. I've had the personal pleasure of going out with several of our frontline teams, and I want to pay testament to the amazing and often outstanding work that they do. And I'm very glad that we are able to maintain that service. So in short, we have a budget for our area this year which is designed to maintain our frontline services, to keep our commitment to the work that we do, and keep our commitment to Cambridge being such a wonderful place to live in and commit to making it even better where we can. Thank you.
Just to say, we have about fifteen to sixteen minutes on the clock, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. No, I promised to say it's class. I may, it also has been quite conscious at the time. I will break the juice while I'm here to say. Very mindful of councillor Robertson and obviously with response to Asgard's question, much in relation to what I tell them to do with their pollution charge points, obviously, the tax of licenceing our own fleet. Just taking one particular item in the budget, let's invite Paul Farrow. I just want to say one minute, I will stick to one minute on shared ways savings. The current savings going through, obviously, everyone should hopefully be aware, having had briefings, in-hooks, postal charts, letters, emails, press releases and so forth. It's obviously that, of course, obviously, from next week, we have the changes in pin dates coming up. Now, this is part of the second part of the three-part strategy in terms of shared ways services. When I first go with Paul Farrow, the agreement was in place, that we would share the services with South Cambridge, introducing a whole range of seen imagine positions, but also looking at reducing re-optimisation in the second phase, which is now the phase that we're in. Now, this is not only to provide ongoing year-on-year saving of a hundred and fifty or so thousand pounds. I think that's quite sizable sum. The crucial thing is it allows us to redistribute the rounds, which because of the developing in Cambridge and the unequal development in Cambridge, we could equal out the rounds so that areas suffer less issues with mispits and so forth. There aren't many cities that go through the rate expansion that Cambridge does and are currently delivering firstly the same services and business that they were several years ago as we are. They equally are doing that cheaply or cheaper than they were before. And that's what we've managed to do. So I would like to pay tribute to all the offices in both Cambridge and South Yorkshire who have worked a critical part to achieve this and are looking forward to future savings and opportunities. And well done.
Councillor Herbert, you have actually been... Oh, don't worry, I won't give you a call. I think you've heard from all of our other citizens, the councillors, and I think what they underline is that we're here for residents, and we're here for the core services that people want, and we're protecting them at an extremely difficult time because we have massive cuts in the ground. And we'd like to make changes. And a lot of those changes are not simple, and they involve our staff. So I'd like to pay tribute to all our staff, and particularly the leadership that we've had, because that is essential to protecting the services and jobs. You've heard that there's a lot more substance that isn't actually in the numbers today. So just to take some examples within what we do, we are this year going to contribute nearly quarter of a million pounds to the citizens' advice view of the city. We protected nine hundred thousand pounds worth of ground funding, of the core funding, and that's not, that doesn't include the homelessness and the housing funding. As councillor Robertson said, other councils have cut winter organics and winter green waste collections. And that isn't going to happen here. So there's a commitment to services. And the money that we hold, which councillor Robertson referenced, the fifty million pounds that really was just sort of rotting in low-interest bank accounts until 2014, that is helping save services. What is also critical is that we work on bigger geography. So we work on the geography of Greater Cambridge. And if you just look at shared services and the commitment to deliver jointly with South Cambridge, what that achieves is it achieves the benefits of working in a unitary way, but retains the difference of the sovereignty of city dwellers and the country and residents. And we have the shared interest, but we just have a different approach to life. And what has happened through all of the work that we've been able to do, and the next report that's coming up is on shared planning, because we'll be reporting on proposals for shared planning services between the two councils in March, demonstrates that we can meet the very different needs of two communities by that cooperation. We'll be building on that. We've got giant computing services. We've got all sorts of giant services, legal, building control, and others, including the housing development agency. And one of the things that will come through this year will be a focus on a digital strategy, because we can do better for our residents and we can do better for our staff if we've got the right tools for the job. So what we also see coming through this effort. We've referenced a lot of capital investments. We are beneficiaries of an inheritance, well about twenty, fifty years, of significant land in the city. And so we will be, during the course of this year, developing plans for Park Street Car Park, working with ward councils, working with businesses, because this isn't an easy change. But it will be, a car park, effectively designed as a matter of the future, it will be smaller in terms of the number of car spaces. It will have housing in public, it will have commercial property. And it's just one example. We will be redeveloping our land over at Calley Road. We will be planning ahead for what is a sort of a bit of a hysterical sadness of moving out in terms of Hillgrove Depot, which has been occupied by the council for over a hundred and ten years. But we will be investing in our own portfolio. We will be working with the county council, just like we did in keeping the street lights on last year. And we're glad that the county council have now taken that bill off us. And we'll be continuing to invest in street lighting because we want to see the county council brighten the street lights in our city. So we have, through the whole programme, a commitment to residents. People will focus on this little amendment, that little amendment, and we can come on to debate that. But look at the substance. We have collectively built on your efforts previously, but we've unleashed the opportunities of investment. We've got a large capital programme, which is an amazing delivery for a council, which is a relatively small council in British terms. And we're doing what is the main thing. So in conclusion, I'll just point people to the resident survey. And all right, surveys are good and bad, but this is an authoritative survey. It was conducted in twenty o eight, twenty eleven, and now twenty sixteen. And there's a lot we can learn in here, and I'm not crowing here, but one of the findings was that seventy-six percent of our residents there are satisfied with how the council runs it. Now, that's not going to be enough. We want to raise that. But if you compare that to twenty eleven, the figure was fifty-eight percent. So despite all of those comments, our commitment is to our residents, to the people who work in the city, to our businesses, to use the money to best effect and protect the services despite all the threats that come from outside.
Thank you. We now move to agenda item five B, the Democrat Group Amendment. Please turn to pages two hundred and ninety-three to three hundred and seventeen of your agenda. Apologies for error in the pages twenty-nine to ninety-one, should not be included and are not considered. I now call the Democrat Group to present its alternative budget. You also have up to forty-five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd like to add my thanks to those that are also good and to the officers for their hard work on this budget, both the base budget that's just been presented, but also working with my members on our amendment. And disappointing with this budget is about its political direction. Though it wisely continues, and councillor Herbert's acknowledged it, continues the transformation path that was established when we led the council, it looks to us increasingly that this administration has run out of new ideas and has lost the plot with some of the older ones. And in short, that everyone's opposite are no longer trying as hard as they did. So we have brought forward ideas in our amendment which should and still could form part of the council's budget plans. We will speak to these during this presentation, and the vote follows. The section one five one officer confirms that they are forming without unbalancing the budgets, without crossing the risk threshold for reserves that the council set itself in its mid-year financial review. Indeed, that is the other remarkable aspect of the executive's budget. The Head of Finance, with the council's agreement, has put in place a method for assessing the financial risks the council is facing in order to determine the minimum level of reserves we should maintain. And to be safer still, a still higher margin for a target level of reserves. In November, you proposed, and the council agreed, what these should be in current circumstances. Five point three one million for the minimum and six point three seven million for the target. And today, you're proposing no change in that decision. Yet, you're proposing a budget, potentially saying no to lots of additional plans and priorities, and levy a council tax apparently partly to provide at least one million more than even the safer of the two safety margins in each of the next five years. In most years, it's more than one and a half million, and in one year, it goes even over two million. So money saved, money raised, just to do what? It's between six and twelve percent of the entire General Fund budget in net spending. Is that just to sit there? Is it for, sorry, election binge in the future? We aim to persuade you, Mr Mayor, of how it could be put to work. So what is going on? Are there these budget proposals ideas that you have previously considered but discarded because you actively disagree with them? And if so, please tell us about it in the debate. Or did you dismiss them because you think they are unworkable? This hasn't been the view of officers we've worked with on. And the biggest takeaway when the scrutiny...
And the biggest takeaway when in the scrutiny of the proposals at the committee was that some of your members at that stage had not even read them properly, but they also haven't read some of their own proposals properly either. Or did you consider such ideas just shouldn't be afforded? To us, that would be surprising unless you started to believe your own political narrative, which cannot admit that despite the government's swingy reductions in ground that you described, that this is hardly a core council, especially when compared to all the desperate authorities with social care responsibilities. Or maybe you didn't think about these ideas at all and they came fresh to you in our amendment. So maybe you wish you had thought of them. In that case, let's get on with it in all our capabilities. Or maybe you wish you had, but down to political machismo, you can't bear to be seen to take other people's ideas on board, not invented here. In that case, you'll do what you choose today, but we will watch carefully to see what you do in the future. We will not shut up about these ideas. But for you, delay to plan, to play partisan games while the opportunity is there now and when the resources will otherwise lie there unused is not good governance and it's not fair to the public. There is wide interest in our proposals, and councillor Blakemore has acknowledged some of that. It's not only us you'll need to explain to if you vote them down. We would remind you, and you've charted it already tonight, your own slogan, One Cambridge. That would stick in the craw somewhat if in reality that meant One Cambridge so long as your Labour. For example, quite a few people have done a lot of work to bring forward a vision of what our market square could be like if it was revitalised. They brought it to you and they were told the council hadn't got the capacity for something like that, and instead they'd made some piecemeal improvements. Now, not to diminish the kind of piecemeal improvements that could be undertaken, that's not really the point. The point is that it's precisely the well-intentioned piecemeal changes of the past that has prompted the challenge by others to us now to stand back a bit and let out how this vital public space could be improved as a whole in the future before going into action on individual things which might ultimately not fit. Now, we know that large-scale capital funding from the council may not be available today and that this takes time to accumulate and to potentially find match funding and income opportunities to support. But most seem to agree this needs undertaking. We know there are many points of view from the market traders, from the public, from the other stakeholders about what form a revitalised square should take. But this will be so at whatever point this challenge is embraced. That's why our proposal is to build that vision through a big exercise in public participation and to do it now, to cost a plan, to construct a business case, identify funding sources so we know exactly what we want to do and are ready to go. Our proposal therefore is to provide the council with precisely the capacity that you say it lacks to do this work. Why not capitalise on the ideas that have come forward from Cambridge past us and the future and others? Why not seize the moment? And Mr May, we're also asking you to stand back from what you're planning in relation to the city centre car parks. These are part of a transport system, a fact we think you're ignoring. The Bruna transport objectives, which we thought you supported, although we're having our doubts now, is to encourage people to use buses or bikes to come into the system rather than use their cars. And for this reason, with one exception we'll discuss later, we agree with your general objective for weekends of rounding up Sunday car park charges for Saturday. But why freeze prices on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, reducing their real cost to the consumer? And why, oh why, reduce by fifteen per cent the actual money cost for the charges on Mondays and Tuesdays, making parking in them more attractive than alternatives? Price signals are important to behaviour, as we've sadly seen the other way around with the imposition of the parking charge at the county council's parking ride sites. So we're asking you to consider this. If the council's budget can manage without the income loss by reducing car park prices by fifteen per cent on Mondays and Tuesdays, then why not put the money instead into scrapping the one pound park and ride charge on the same days? This is perfectly feasible, as county council officers confirm. The time is surely upon us when we should stop acting purely parochially and start recognising that the city council and the county council have to be partners in the business of car parking to achieve shared transport policy objectives, to reduce congestion and reduce pollution in the urban area. With both sets of books of both organisations still balancing, it's pure myopia to see ourselves in isolation. Now, except for councillor Hippen, he was here today, no one in this chamber would want to be associated with the county council budget that was passed last week. Whilst I welcome the possibility of progress that was signalled there about scrapping the park and ride charge, I for one do not welcome that being achieved through extra cuts in social care or children's centres. And if this council has got more than two hundred thousand pounds of spare, as your budget says we have, it should be used not to cut its own car park charges but to assist the county council with the costs of getting rid of the one pound park and ride charge, keeping social care funding better protected. To me, that seems obviously sensible and right. I'd now like to turn to trees. I remember leaving foot a few months ago proudly trumpeting the council's new tree strategy. And councillor Smith trumpeted again this night. It's a strategy I think we all subscribe to, as far as it goes, but it isn't itself trees, it's just a piece of paper. We do want to increase the city's tree cover by two per cent by twenty thirty, which was the target that councillor Smith seems very sure we're on our way to. But I'm afraid that this target is only going as good as the resources you put into it. Otherwise, it's going to remain just a pious hope. The resources put into tree planting in the city under your administration have actually reduced because of your failure last year to renew the twenty-five thousand pounds per annum investment instituted by us. And worse still, the need for extra investment has actually increased through ash dye back disease, through storm damage and heat stress, part of the onset of climate change. You have reached a stage where trees in public open spaces and along roads are being lost faster than your tree planting budget can keep up with. You can only hope to keep up by plundering from money meant for maintaining existing trees, meaning that action to increase the longevity of existing trees is reduced. How self-defeating is that? This is quite clearly not what anyone wants. But to correct it, you need to recognise the issue and to support the proposal we're making today. Now, in a moment councillor Austin will talk about our second tree proposal, the children's tree scheme, and the need for improved supervision of event contractors to protect our public open spaces. Councillor O'Callaghan will ask you to support encouraging democratic participation by those on the eve of voting age, a project to bring together public access information about community facilities and to make our neighbourhood as a city of sanctuary for refugees and asylum seekers tangible in the face of a new need. And councillor Cantrell will ask you to consider making housing not out of town retail parks, a priority which we're investing the money of our council. He'll also encourage you to give some certainty to vote wells on the can about our homes that we all expect in relation to ours and for others. And he will highlight particularly which will be unintentionally caught up in your new car park charge system. But before that, I want to touch on four smaller proposals that we are making today. Your vote to approve the public art proposition could help to bring to fruition a project that's been talked about for a long time and just needs this catalyst to happen. A vast amount of money has been invested in public art in the city, and it would be great if this could become more easily identified to the public through an online catalogue. Our proposal is predicated on funding by developers in the city of a website design and setup, the most expensive piece of this, from whom there has been a very positive interest in doing that and willingly contributes, and they are waiting for us to bring this together. Your vote to approve the country parks proposal will provide the means to involve the whole city in the two parks at Trumpington. Though adjacent residents are obviously conscious of these parks, the city as a whole isn't, yet these are assets for everyone. So much is said that is critical about urban extensions, that it is worth encouraging awareness that these can be accompanied by opening up of public access to surrounding countryside and a provision of natural habitats that were never there before. These are something really worth celebrating along with the provision of new homes. Your support for our planning enforcement system will help to send out a message that the council wants to tighten up on its pursuit of those who fall out of the planning approval system. The development pressures in this growing city is councillor Blakemore voted. Can make this, need to make this a priority. We need to make clear what can ultimately happen if people fail to comply, and we need to position ourselves to act financially when money is being made out of unapproved uses of buildings. And please also consider carefully the peer measuring scheme for single homeless people that we're proposing. We welcome the government's grant that councillor Price mentioned, enabling a dual diagnosis team to be created for clinical support on the streets. Our offices pursue exactly the right issue which keeps so many of the rough sleepers from engaging with health. The peer measuring scheme would sit powerfully alongside this and the motivational support that is equally badly needed for the road to stability to be adhered to, supplied by others who have been there themselves. What is needed is unbureaucratic and independent of any particular hospital or tenancy which people can regress between, leaving other help behind. It requires an understanding of the really personal, human challenge involved in getting people off the streets, however they got there, which so many of our residents are also wanting to see. We know that handouts alone can't solve the problem, and the right kind of handout is really the holy grail we're looking for. This idea was originally advanced by those professionally engaged with working with rough sleepers here in Cambridge. It just needs the capability that is represented by the proposal in our amendment. People are asking not, is the council doing a lot about this problem of rough sleeping? They're not asking that. They are asking, is the council doing as much as can be done? It's a different question. Forty-one people counted sleeping rough before dawn one night last November, double the number a year before. These are not fake daily male commuting homeless people attempting sympathy due to others. This proposal is definitely not an incentive to sleep rough in Cambridge. This scheme takes seriously the tough personal challenge facing individuals, which in my judgment Cambridge has a real conscience about and wants to go the extra mile to help. So do listen, Mr May, while my colleagues continue with our presentation.
There's about twenty-eight minutes left. Yeah, about twenty-eight minutes.
Sorry, I'm just scrolling through my digital strategy. Also, thank you for the introduction and thank you for the communications so far. And thank you to the officers who helped me come to the conclusions that I've come to. What a day to talk about trees. I had a really scary experience earlier in the day when I was walking down the road and a huge tree, a huge branch, a healthy tree, very close to me, but very, very narrowly missed a neighbour on the postman who was walking down the road. Both were silent and scared in a very narrow escape. And I'm pleased to say I did actually phone record this trip. It was actually removed within two hours, which was very impressive, particularly it turned he wasn't safe. But it's a perfect example of the kind of responses that our council has to give when this kind of thing happens. And it's blindingly obvious that maintaining our current stock of trees needs resourcing and resourcing properly. I don't know how many trees have been lost today, and it's a very step thin that those that have have. But not only those that have been lost, but many of them will have been injured in some way or another and will need care and attention. What I do know is that our editorial team will be stretched and are stretched for their work and don't have the resources that they need. They're focused on short-term need for planting trees and maintaining firefighting problems, but what we're doing, what we've looked at, is really looking towards the future. I'm aware that the maintenance box is used for planting the trees, which has already been referred to. And we need to be continually nurturing them to have the healthy stock for the future. On a day like today, we become aware of the risks and these, but we must remember that these are far outweighed by the benefit of trees in our urban life. They're not only for the character of our environment, but are essential for clean air. We've already heard you're committed to that, so, you know, let's stick with it, have a common voice. They're essential to biodiversity, to wildlife, to reducing flooding risk and health and wellbeing, and many other things that we all know about, but let's all be committed to this. Over the last two years in the city's tree, the city's tree management on city council land or managed city council land, we have lost trees. I know we can build arguments around there's more trees in a wider environment. I know we've had a Bayes' scheme which has become more successful, but let's not forget on that managed land we are losing trees. And we're also losing many trees, a lot of the development that's taken place, maybe in private places and on private property. But it's going, we need to be committed so that we're building people with us who are going to build for the future the tree cover. We have, we're delighted that there's all the new, the new trees that have been built, being planted out of Grayneide. But let's not forget, there are also a lot of very big mature trees who were providing the tree canopy, but they've been destroyed at that time. So let's think about the future. Let's think about how we engage people in building a better future and a better tree canopy. We're not arguing about the two per cent canopy growth by twenty thirty. I think we're all committed to that. But what we should be saying is with the fire ownership, with the commercial developments, we should be looking for a lot more than two per cent. Two per cent is our minimum. And new trees being planted take a long time before they actually start developing the canopy that we need for our clean air. And we are losing a lot of big trees that are disappearing, so let's not forget that. The proposal for the children's tree scheme is all about the future. It's about educating, it's about engaging, and it's about the future of our city. If we can engage children in understanding the value of trees, they'll also come along their parents, who will also become more committed. And we'll be able to actually have a much longer term chance of achieving what it is that we want to. I certainly love your Bayes' scheme. I think a Bayes' scheme is fantastic, but it's a busy time in people's lives, a few people take it up and increasingly never take it up. I think we've probably helped to build the publicity and that is unfair to you. But, you know, it is, it is accessible. But if we can get children at the age of eight and nine, there's about a thousand of them across the city, if we can actually give them a tree at their very young, if we can educate them about how to plant it, how to look after it, we're actually reducing our maintenance fee for those trees as well. And they will be proud of them as they grow up in our city, they will then start engaging with the As they grow up in our city, they will then start engaging in building and planting trees in a way that we want them to. We've spoken to schools, and they are delighted because it fits with the education agenda for the environment, it's something that they can't necessarily do. Many school grounds don't have enough trees in them, they know outdoor learning trees are very important, and if we can actually, if children don't have gardens or if they prefer to donate their trees to school, then this is something that we're proposing. It's a small amount of money, it's twenty pounds a tree with some educational and funding around it to enable us to deliver it properly to the schools and to their homes. Twenty-five pounds in total per tree, twenty-five thousand pounds a year will give us a thousand trees a year in five years' time, or five thousand trees. How can we possibly not think that that is a really useful way to spend a very tiny amount of money that delivers your climate change, that delivers your tree strategy? So please, please take that seriously, and please don't raid the maintenance pot for putting in your new trees. Please allow that maintenance pot to be used to keep healthy, strong trees in our city. So think of it seriously. And the final thing I'd like to just talk about is the open spaces, and I think, you know, there's some good messages that people are giving them, that we're engaging them, there's lots and lots of events that everybody across the city enjoys, fantastic, but the cost of that is the months and weeks after when the land is left in a sad and sorry state. So we're asking for a very small amount of money, we're suggesting a very small amount of money to enable someone to actually supervise, to build it, and we get the take down of these events, to make sure that these lawyers don't go out on the grass and leave wedges, that we don't end up with problems of flooding because the heavy duty vehicles are driven in the wrong place. So it's a small amount of money which will mean people can enjoy the open spaces, but they can enjoy them all year round instead of having them fenced off for weeks while the land actually is being prepared. So please consider these things seriously, they are a benefit for all, and they do fit your slogan. It is for all, it is across the city, and if you look at the tree canopy spread across the city and across the wards, you'll see that many of the places who you believe you're trying to be fair to are very low in tree canopy. Children in those wards will have equal opportunity to have a tree to plant in their garden.
What gardens?
For the school, for the commercial, I think, or none.
There's like ninety minutes left.
Thank you. I'd like to open first of all by echoing the comments of councillor Big and councillor Office, councillor Office, apologies, and thanking the officers for their efforts in preparing this project and then, it is a fantastic management work and it's a perfectly good pass on. Our thanks, because those who are present will be grateful. The first item I always like to talk to is one that I think should be the least controversial and easiest to accept, namely a database of community facilities. As most in this chamber will know, there's been a lot of work, hard work done by officers over the previous year in putting together a comprehensive list of all community facilities within the city and in the units around the area. It's involved a lot of work, engaging with the public at area committees, in contacting the facilities themselves and of the actual population of the list. I would hope that all of us here would agree that we would like to protect that method and build it by making data available to the public. This proposal is for ongoing of money, the duck just back, and these in terms of the council's overall budget are particularly small. It's also a very timely approach, I think, given just from our list, and if we wait even until the next budget round, the information that we have already collected will be spared. Once we've preserved this information, we can require those who apply for money from the council, grants for community projects, section one oh six money, community structure levy, this economy, or any of the many other grants, we can require a line information upon request about facilities, that opening hour is about what's available. This will allow us to keep the data fresh without needing to repeat the efforts already spent. And finally, there's a requirement in these budget sizes to publish the data in a credible format so that others can reuse it. We do have a number of people in the city who are big fans of the data and can reuse that. My second item I want to talk to is democratic involvement of first time and soon to be voters who live, work, and study in the city. The problem with getting younger people to vote is well documented, and I need not go on the length, but I walk my life one recent statistic. The town Anthony E U referendum, under twenty-five was just sixty-four percent, whereas those sixty-five and over, it was ninety percent, quite a big difference. But it's not just engagement in the national issues that need addressing. Local politics suffers from similar delays. Attendance, that's briefly, and more importantly, and there's more councils of any area committees, has much higher advocacy than I, and I'm sure many others would like. At least for the Borkham community, we're a piece of environmental case work that very specifically involved sixteen to eighteen year olds in local quality. Now, they were very keen to resolve the issue, but in trying to talk to them, it was very clear that they felt a disconnect from how things actually worked in local quality. It didn't really feel engaging with the area duty process, which discussed environmental matters, was, was a route they were willing to take. This item funds a part-time officer to try to resolve that kind of engagement. There's always much excellent work done by the chicks team with children up to the age of fourteen, but certainly myself, for the existing measures proposed by youth councils, they fix events that could feel quite separate from the normal sort of routine and physical cycles, and can feel a bit unrelated to events that people actually see unfolding around them in the community. And on the second time post, specific ways of getting involved, not just in a generic way, but also informing people about specific proposals in their area that will affect them, either young, soon to be voters, or affect, in the case of the case where, like a recent thing, the education establishment they're at. People are more likely to engage if there's issues directly affecting them, as I'm sure many of you know, involving the test team, and if they're shown, shown how they can engage, but they will remain engaged in the political process. It was suggested by the part of office during committee discussion around amendment, that people who are pre-aged at sixteen and nineteen are too busy with exams to be bothered with politics. That's an argument that we on this side reject. One only has to look at the political society, because I think for the colleagues, you can see that. I was handed to the number of ten needs at the event at Phil Rose, I attended a couple of years ago, and what's been from long ago, the mayor's speaker at the House of Commons, after reaching the finals of competition run by National Political Studies Association in twenty fifteen. All this existing engagement is something we can encourage, build on, and try and get that new engagement, young adults getting up. And it's like this, six or four colleges, of course. Each year, the city sees new fronts of students from all corners of the country coming to study at universities and other establishments in Cambridge. These are people who may have come from areas that are quite politically mild, or there's a stick of cobras, or a donkey, and you can get elected areas. We have in Cambridge a vibe for local government, and what better time is there to engage them when they are at home about to vote for the first time. My final item, which I expect your support, is on refugees. We placed a similar item in front of the council last year, but it was taken as part, not taken up as part of the lack of venues that there was special needs. Some confusion seemed to surround that reason with the then-executive councillor for finals stating falsely in his own unique style that only four individuals present in the city would have been covered by this, although this was contradicted by councillor Presley's to which rate, putting that number thirty. We believe the element of need was, despite those restrictions applied, quite clear there, and it's certainly, I'd say, announced, with over forty refugees seeking help from one nonprofit organization in Cambridge, and more effectively, particularly in the target of, I believe, one hundred giving refugees who invite welcome to the city. We also have a much clearer idea of the cost of one of these services, and experience has shown the money spent in actually on all the resources. One of the issues raised with this service, by the climate sector, exactly how they can volunteer themselves to help others also in need. This item commissions a great work with an nonprofit sector to continue providing advice. Unfortunately, while there is an existing service, the funding for it is time limited and runs out in October of this year. I'm proud to live and represent the city's faction, but this should mean more than just words. We have a motion and amendment later on refugees, we like suspect to see widespread support on all sides of this chamber, but now on this item, to show that we read me it, as a backup, and we're good actions.
Thank you, and there is about ten minutes left.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before I start, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to clarify the interest as I want to hear the start of the meeting. I'd like to clarify just relating to my candidacy in relation to the regional mayor, an item that's being recovered later, and I'd also like to clarify the interest in that I'm a trustee of Winter Comfort for the homeless, for homeless charity in the city. Mr Mayor, this is council's budget, should be about setting the tone, the character, and the colour for the administration's policy agenda for the next twelve months. But in my view, what is so stark about the ruling group's budget is what is missing, such as a proposition in relation to moorings, such as a proposition in relation to community facilities. And one could speculate that that may be just timing or incompetence, or one could speculate that that's a deliberate measure, that the ruling group seeks to actually avoid the shining of a light on these type of issues at a point in time when we consider the council's financial position. But for me, any of those reasons are irrelevant, because the ruling group's project does not serve the residents in the city in the way that in my view an administration should do. So it falls to us, the Liberal Democrats, to breathe life, you may laugh, but it falls to us, the Liberal Democrats, to breathe life into the council's policy agenda, to bring colour, a liberal colour, to, what one has to say, what one has to say is a very great budget, a very great budget. And the Libden Amendment highlights that we have listened to residents. The Libden Amendment shows that we've listened to their concerns. It shows that we've not only listened, but we've acted on their behalf. So let me touch on three areas, Mr Mayor, that our amendment reflects. Firstly, our proposal relating to Sunday car parking charges at the Grand Arcade. Secondly, our proposal relating to property investment. And thirdly, our proposal relating to moorings. So let's just look at the Sunday car parking at the Grand Arcade, an amendment that I hope is not controversial and the ruling group will accept. So for many people who lead their busy lives, Sunday has now become Black Saturday, a day when they seek to shop and undertake leisure activities here in the city centre, and I think we all recognise that. However, there is a difference between the two days, and that is, for the majority of shops and leisure activities, they don't start until roughly midday. And as I'm sure all members are aware, a key character of the city centre, the historic hall on a Sunday morning, is a religious one, with many residents from across the city attending religious services at one of our historic religious buildings. The concern that residents have on ruling group's proposal is highlighted by the fact that it's the first time, Mr Mayor, that I have seen the budget amendment appear in a city church's newsletter, not just one week, but two weeks, two weeks in relation to this issue. And so the Libden Amendment seeks to address the strong concern that residents have expressed by keeping the car parking charges in the Grand Arcade at their current level for short stays during Sunday morning. So let me now turn to our amendment relating to the ruling group's proposal to invest more in commercial property, like the B and Q in Haverhill that they have previously invested in, some additional twenty million pounds. As we've heard this evening, Cambridge continues to be extremely challenged in relation to ordinary people either buying or renting a home. The city council is a key stakeholder in the city and has a duty to help to address this issue by significantly increasing the number of houses that it can rent on a submarket basis. Currently, Mr Mayor, we have approximately only twenty houses in the housing development company relating to this. So we therefore propose to invest ten million of the twenty million allocated to property, commercial property investment, to acquire residential properties, most probably on the Mill Road depot site, and to rent them out on a submarket basis. And obviously, I'd like to reassure the councillor for housing that we have spent quite a lot of time in relation to this proposal, officers have shared with us the detailed business plan for the developed housing funds, and we've met with officers on a number of occasions to refine our proposals. They've also shared with us the return that the current housing property companies actually making on the properties that sit in it. So this proposal, Mr Mayor, highlights how we on this side of the chamber have listened not only to those people who need social housing, but also the many residents in this city who are hardworking and are struggling to rent. The amendment highlights our belief that the council's investment strategy should not be just about hard financial return, as the ruling group seems to be defaulting to, but has an important, but it has an important and a critical strand to it, which is about a social return for residents of this city. So finally, Mr Mayor, let me turn to the mooring strategy, because I believe this amendment seeks to address a fundamental deficit that the ruling group's budget has set out in relation to this area. And I could spend a lot of time talking about this issue. We've heard from key residents, whose voices have been in this chamber on a number of occasions and in other places, pleading with us to address this issue. We've heard in the past how this issue has sat with three executive councillors, and now has ended up with the executive councillor for money, which seems to illustrate the ruling group's approach to this. We also hear how even the consultation originally had a scheme, we basically had some reverse auction in relation to the mooring fees. So the ruling group clearly has not been able to address this issue, and we believe, we believe that on this side of the chamber, it is important that the voices of those moorings users, as illustrated with the pan voters this evening, are heard. And so our amendment is a very simple amendment. It's to basically cap the mooring fee, cap it on a two percent basis, Mr Mayor, and already, as I'm sure members are aware, the council makes a profit of thirty-five thousand from the current level of mooring fees, thirty-five thousand, double the amount, yes it does. The council is shaking his head, and I request, Mr Mayor, that when the executive councillor stands up, that he just confirms whether that is the case or not, because I have the detailed papers from officers, and it is the case. And I know the ruling group have issued with this, because the ruling group are not exactly on the detail in terms of the financial implications of the on the detail in terms of the financial implications of the mooring strategy. So the amendment, Mr Mayor, it is simple. It listens to the voices of that key community in the city, and it's one that commits to cap the future increases on the same basis as had been in the past. But importantly, it's one that ends the unneeded distress, emotional distress, Mr Mayor, that people using the moorings have experienced for a month, number of months, and actually now for two many months. So, Mr Mayor, I believe that the moor amendment and the other amendments that my colleagues have set out this evening illustrate what the Liberal Democrat amendment has at its heart, a philosophy where we have listened to residents and key stakeholders in the city, be it the homeless, the churchgoers, market traders and users, or people who live on the river. A philosophy where we have taken those issues raised by residents and responded in a genuine and appropriate way. A philosophy where regardless of size, we disagree with the leader. Small amendments are important. Every issue for a resident is important, regardless of how small or how large. So, Mr Mayor, fundamentally, the Liberal Democrat amendment has at its heart a goal to breathe life into the ruling group's budget, a budget that is not a bread budget, but as I said, it's a bread one, but it breathes life into a budget using the immense social capital this authority has at its disposal. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
In the agenda, it says that at this point, the Green Independent Group would leave out of comment. They have decided to waive that option this evening, so I'm proposing that we break now and till twenty to nine by that clock. When we come back, we will debate the Liberal Democrat amendment as a re-election. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming back so promptly. We now will debate the Liberal Democrat alternative budget as we've entered it, and this will be dealt with as an amendment which is deemed to have been moved and seconded. At the end of this, please note that all councillors' votes take on the amendment and the executive budget will be recorded, but I'll remind you of that before we get to it. Anybody wishing to speak? Councillor Price? Like that then, I'll call the councillor for vice.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'm going to restrict my comments on parts of the Liberal Democrat budget amendment, which touch on my portfolio. I can't help but notice how limited the ambition is of those on the bench is opposite, and how little understanding they seem to demonstrate of strategic issues. Housing, they said in their amendment, is not only something the government pays for, seemingly oblivious to the fact that under the Covid-ish government, the government stopped investing in social housing, which incidentally repays any grant, almost completely and started simply giving away public money to private landlords and even individual market purchasers. And I'm sort of struck by something councillor Candrell said about listening, listening to residents. I'm very pleased he's learned how to listen to residents, because they weren't doing, they weren't doing, they weren't listening to the residents of Water Lake and Campkin Row, Aylesborough Close, Carver Row, Lidsfield Row, when they decided that they were going to demolish their homes, oddly enough, all in Labour wards, I'll leave it there with you, Mr Mayor, just taking lectures on listening to members of the public from a party that never listens to the members of the public, but in certain areas they haven't anyway. It was the Liberal Democrats who sold off council land, and it was the Labour administration who invested in our own sub-market rental housing company and bought back the land they sold off. And it is this Labour administration which is actively seeking to expand that property portfolio for investing further in, for example, new homes at Park Street and Mill Road Depot. I was also interested to read in the amendment proposal for peer mentoring support, and there is no doubt tackling entrenched rough sleepers and increasing the support for those who come off street to sustain a non-street-based lifestyle is very important. And we know, for example, that presentations to Jimmy's are decreasing, and that many of those entrenched rough sleepers are returners to the streets. Mr Mayor, I attended a homelessness summit earlier today, where I had called together all the key partners and organisations with whom we worked to discuss our strategic objectives for tackling rough sleeping, including any service gaps, and peer mentoring was one of the issues I raised with them this afternoon. There are some very interesting projects being done in other areas where peer mentoring is included in street outreach or client support services. For example, the street homeless charity Tens Reach uses peer mentoring to support those with drug and alcohol addictions. And Riverside, which operates in Cambridge as well as nationally, uses a buttings programme and no second night out volunteer programme, where those who have overcome addiction, street homeless, homelessness and offending behaviours, work as part of a street outreach team to help support clients entering the service. Some of the charities working with young people also use peer mentoring programmes, so I do support the premise behind the amendment, whilst I do not support the specific budget proposal. Officers have already raised with me that many of the organisations we work with prefer to use their own support services. This afternoon, I suggested to those attending the homelessness summit that where they wish to develop peer mentoring support, partner their own programmes, they can put forward bids to our grant programme, which we would consider for financial support. For me, this is a better use of our officers' time and a better support for the organisations involved, and that's why I would not be supporting a budget bid and a Liberal Democrat proposal. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Leslie?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm not speaking for the independents today, and I won't discuss it, so just picking myself and the Greens, and I'll trust the budget as well on the same page if I can, same time.
You still got five minutes, I guess, and you've got five minutes anyway.
Four minutes left.
We're going to have to pass on very generous to this evening because of the situation.
Well, first of all, congratulations on the improvement in the president's salary from your sector, it's a considerable amount, got over that, and yes, it can be agreed, and I think you could identify a traditional strategy or something that can help to do that, because while you put hours and hours and hours into testing services, people who use them won't always know how much work goes into them, but will often go through traditional backgrounds to get them, so pushing for that and could make the experience easier for them. So it's a mention the experience of many councillors that just wanted things to keep in Cambridge, had complained about the central digital sector. Making consultations easy to use online, improving the experience of those as well, it'd be good, it'll get the digital strategy in a good time. Improving community centres, certainly, the budget that included consultation going on about homeless people seeing people at the same city, but setting a ambition, but providing one, maybe centres would have been better, I think. Addressing the amendment, I think the language is really around that the amendment is an agreement too, with some of the products, some of the main screening things before. But one thing I do like issue with is the claim that the financial bite for the council is not exemplary, I don't see the point of that statement. As far as you stretch from both the council's and the blood war and more camps all around, and storms lie ahead as well, so saving some money, giving some money back, just important. We'll go through some of the points in the amendment. Trees do seem important to be supported, and while the trees and children's game is important, I think more strategies, more diversity of way provides trees is important. In a forest, you do see diversity of strategies to survive. A strategy for the place trees must have planned process will be helpful. It's a positive way to provide trees to people through other schemes will be good. Obviously, the tree can be impacted damage over the debate, so yeah, more work, so the community will be well on. The tree strategy says that the forestry management approach will give similar ways for trees as it is given to roads and houses and planning. So still waiting to really see that, I've never foreseen that. Murray, so lots been said about that already. I think it is important that the riverlands be protected, and I wish that reassurances could have been given to them earlier on, that the approach would be fair. It seems as if they're making total waste of the consultation finished. That gives the impression that the outcome of it regards to consultation, possibly to be so, truly it's possible to give them some confidence about their future, for all the consultations finishes, because the council has a choice. The refugees, as I said, we discussed this last year, the, yeah, I was, we were celebrating the new refugees in the city. I was hoping there's some sort of allocation for them for now, I hope that it will make an hour. This is an important thing, not just supporting refugees already, instead of supporting someone who goes to, once, recently from Asia, refugee, asylum seeker from Uganda, who has been persecuted in this country today, a local woman. Any help that the city can give her to pay the strong climate asylum after paying the few bucks already on shaky grounds would be good. Cambridge legions, they offer a bunch more help to refugees, not just certain refugees, but all refugees who are playing persecution within environmental disaster. So I think the amendment makes a reasonable claim to do that better. Finally, the market, this is something I've worked on a few times already, the proposal in the amendment to improve the market is really important at the moment. And yes, the Libden could have invested in the market in the past, they have control of the council for quite a long time, but now they have to benefit with this proposal and fast present the future. So much work into this, but it's worth, I think it's worth doing the work now to try and go forward with it. I wish that we have not raised prices for market traders until we have really sorted out the state of the market, which is not just about visual appearance, it's not just about the, it's about fairness for the traders who work here as well, who have brought people into the city centre for so long, who have provided services.
Councillor Johnson? May I, Mr Mayor, in respect of the Liberal Democrat proposals to budget ninety thousand for three years to fund democracy post, to go into ecologies and cities, to assault benefits of democracy, we're not supporting this simply because Democratic Service has already conducted outreach work with this cohort, befriending by the Cabinet's office, encouraging these young people to register, following the change to the digital electoral registration. So as a consequence, whilst I see my mind of all objective, that is to promote the worth and value of participating in local and national democratic process, something which is reflected in our alternative budget proposal to enhance the role of young people in council decision-making. I don't believe that this is neither a good use of council sources, nor, in my view, manually targeted. Furthermore, as regards a community facility database, it was always our intention that officers would work on such an initiative in establishing a database, using the data gathered from the community centres review, putting it online, and then making it available in print. So likely this proposal will be marked to answer. This will be a needless duplication of council resources and therefore as an aim to be supported on the side of the chamber, the chamber's better.
Councillor Timble?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to talk about X zero 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 two, planning enforcement support, in short. Enforcement holds an important place in planning process, but it could be undermined by lack of resources, planning officers too busy to prioritize the time, a lack of funds to engage, and external agency work broken. And we know that the planning process plant a extraordinary time pressure. The small sum of twenty thousand pounds for one year, it's a sad response to this problem, and we have to see how any of us are able to circulate and decisive outcomes, but any rules and permissions of reach or conditions are not fulfilled. Most of us have had concerns that builders are getting away with murder, as I say, most of mine. But Cambridge has changed over the last thirty years. Thirty years ago, I got an extension in another lot of Cambridge, I committed to other controls. And I had, we talked about planning for some pressure, private planning permission, which was not beginning. The planning enforcement officer was surrounded in flash when I started to build it. Now, it was legal, and I got a legal letter at the end saying, we don't like this, but we can't do anything about it, in the end. Two years ago, we needed this board, the planning permission was given for a house extension. The builders said that they will build a larger extension, and that was suggested. They said that before the planning permission was given. They then proceeded to build that large extension. It was yet to be completed after the shenanigans of seeking retrospective planning approval. The planning system is clearly not as respected as we like. Enforcement is not as prevalent as it was. This one would enable the progression of a proactive or default enforcement action where negotiation and enforcement had failed in order to secure compliance. It should be seen as a self-perpetual pot, subject to carry forward, naming costs to demand for dismantling, pending recovery of costs from the area. There are also opportunities to explore the local application of proceeds of crime, assuming financial penalties of unauthorised presidential usage for example. This budget is small, key beneficial for the city and its reputation, in line with the experience of our new joint aid of planning, supported by a string of busy planning officers, and self-perpetuating. We commend it as a sound investment. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Looneymore?
I'm surprised that you feel that we need someone to supervise the events on public open spaces, because I feel that the council officers and councillors have made huge improvements and that it's all working very smoothly. Of course, there are more improvements can be made, but I understand that council officers feel that that's well within their capabilities. Last year, there were some issues with the North Pole on Polish peace, mainly because of the weather. There were temporary damage to grass, which does grow back, but despite that, this year a lot of new procedures were put in place. All of the damage that there was, was paid for by the contractors, and it provided great joy and entertainment to the people of Cambridge. I have children, they throw something on the ground in the garden, they just kick it up, the worst is damage, you kick it up, it looks a bit yellow for a while, it grows back, it's fine. Oh, sorry. An ice rink with thousands of visitors for six weeks is obviously going to cause a little bit of damage. However, the pleasure that it brings to the people of Cambridge, I feel, is well worth However, the pleasure that it brings to the people of Cambridge, I feel is well worth it. And council officers have been working hard to ensure that the damage is kept to a male.
Catherine Siller.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to point out, I wasn't going to say this, but I feel about to. We were elected on the platform of our Cambridge Fair Floor. The manifestation of that isn't actually making sure that A and B are both given to and C and D also. One Cambridge Fair Floor for us means addressing the deep inequalities that have been allowed to build up in the city. With the fourteen years of the previous administration still here. The fact, we have been in part for most three years. Anti-poverty strategy is getting placed about two and a half, I think, because it took a little time to get to going. The fact that we, that Cambridge appears in the press in very recent times, in the last two or three weeks or so. Builders, the city, the most unequal city in the country is a matter of deep shame, or it should be, for each and every one of us. What it shows is that how deeply ingrained inequality is and has allowed the, that it won't be quick or easy in the eradication of it. We should all, not just on this side, but we should all have it in mind that there are people in this city whose lives have been blighted through disadvantage. And it behoves all of us to be concerned that those inequalities are addressed. So, I'm against Catherine O'Connell's suggestion that money should be spent on sixteen to eighteen year olds to get them to vote. I was the person that Catherine O'Connell referred to who objected to this. And I did so, and I'll say it again now, that sixteen to eighteen year olds have very busy lives. Their social patterns are set, their views are set. For the time being, there's another opportunity later, another window later, when things can get big change for both ages. And Catherine O'Connell proved my point by referring to public society, political societies in six or colleges. Those that are politicized already will vote. Those who are politicized, the window is closed, you need to get them earlier or you get them later. Which is why the programme we have in mind for older children and young adults, ACT UP, which Catherine Johnson referred to earlier. Is something that meets with my deep, deep approval. We have, we've taken measures to address inequalities in terms of social interventions and financial interventions. Encouraging people to take credit union accounts, so they will have bank accounts when universal credit kicks in, which they need to have. And banks won't provide accounts to give all you who don't have shaky financial backgrounds. Recovery classes, health measures, arranging GP surgeries to become hubs. Encouraging Citizens Vice Bureau to do outreach work in our Decry Awards. But there is also, we can intervene in terms of personal development. And the ACT UP project will do that. It's incredible value for money. Thirty young children who came to my attention as part of my leadership on our community safety on the alcohol-related violence, violent crime work that the council undertook earlier, the last year or two with the police as well. And in Abbey ward, a cohort of sixteen to twenty four year olds who, it was uncovered that they were responsible for almost all of the alcohol-related violent crime, domestic violence, petty theft. And these were children, young people who are no longer at school. So that's not somewhere we've been reaching them. And it's been shown that drama, theatre has the ability to really intervene in people's lives. Has the ability to open up their awareness. The evidence is there for everyone to see, so this is a great project and it will.
Catherine Mayfield.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I read last council prior said no to an amendment for the budget scheme, but I would like to just look forward to view of our mother and how help is not advertised to my son. I think that the summer twenty thousand pound debt we used to support homes, people who live in hospitals on the streets. Why do you have to leave it to charities to have young speakers? I spoke to James McWilliams and we had a very good discussion of what was needed. Even my job as a dispensary assistant, I come in contact with a lot of ex-royal secrets in this attic. We tend to go through the process and problems with them through the highs and the low times in our lives. My son Kieran was on the streets for over three years. They were the hardest years of my life, not knowing if he was alive or even where he was. He'd made a friend and they used to look out for each other, but Kieran was still attacked. He was stabbed and had his face botted. Eventually he came back to Cambridge and was living in a one-bedroom flat. The trouble was both Kieran and Richard were easily led and got involved with a group of people who actually turned Kieran out of his flat. And he was back on the streets again. This is where help is needed. Speaking to Kieran, he said he was scary being in a flat, not knowing when to pay bills. He couldn't get a bank account, he had no history of residence and even happened to learn how to cook again. Because as he said, he spent time scattering beans or soup kitchens. I wanted this money so we could send someone to other towns and cities for three months to try to find out other systems and find one that works. And then train ex-royal speakers to mentor or buddy these vulnerable people. One of our ex-royal speakers who comes into Cambridge was willing to go to help us. He said it took him a year to get a package to pay the voter referee and he ended up with him staying on the streets for another twelve years. I do not think this is a large sum of money when you consider what the government is giving the council. It's not just for the Labour Party to decide what to do, but it's for the Cambridge City Council as a whole. I might just ask as a colleague of the mother, I would really like him to get this project, though.
Thank you, Catherine Smith.
Thank you. This meeting is not, and I'm glad we will agree on this, about scoring part of political points to the detriment of the city. It is about giving careful consideration to all the suggestions made, reflecting on officer advice and then weighing out what would be the most effective use of the city's money. So I just want to get some brief responses to some of the budget items in the amendment. In terms of events, we're proud of our events and I want to pay testament to the officers who contribute so much to ensuring everything goes as smoothly as possible. We don't wish to be complacent and we will be carrying out review of our open space use in the summer. If at this time we decide that extra resources required, then I will be proposing that resource, but I don't want to preempt that review. And the extra resources will go into public spaces and public art. I'm all for people knowing more about our project and our wonderful spaces, but again, reviews are coming out linked to both of these areas. And again, we don't want to make any snap decisions on that prior to those reviews. I want to be prudent in our use of those resources and be sure that if we need to allocate extra funds, as opposed to simply think how we use our time differently, that those allocation effectively add in for a good time. Now this brings us off to trees. I did just want to point out, we plant when we can maintain, it's all factored into the budgeting. And also reminding colleagues that trees on high with are not the responsibility of the city council. That we do, we have done some work on the county council behalf, they are county trees. And I will be asking for meetings at county to talk about what they can do to maintain their tree stock. The year four scheme is not a bad scheme and I really want to emphasise that. It's just, for me, not an effective use of resource to have two schemes running at the same time which are so similar. And there are lots of other ways of course to develop educational projects. And I absolutely agree, it's great if you work with young people, as happened with the six hundred saplings that were recently planted at Great Nathan. As council colleagues will know however, I like to approach these things in a spirit of cooperation. And I really hope that we can all work together to get behind the current trees for babies scheme and to be sure that we are all raising the voice of awareness of that scheme to get the maximum trees product through that. Next year, we want to focus our budgetary spending in this area, especially on that trees for babies scheme and in targeting planting on our open spaces. We already have money given, set aside, but given the ever increasing interest in the truth for babies and having consulted carefully with officers, I will be recommending to council colleagues that they vote to accept the budget nine member of more money to be added into the general tree front. I want to thank all colleagues for their contributions this evening, it's actually very, very interesting to sit in and listen to them, thank you.
Catherine Tammigan.
The Market Square, it's a very heart of Cambridge and it should be a source of civic crime. But can anybody in this chamber tell me what this is particularly to be proud of at the present time? Cambridge wishes rightly to be considered a world-class city. Is the Market Square contributing to that? I would suggest not. The Market Square is one place that brings together everybody. I'm absolutely in sympathy with the other side's view of creating one city fair for all. The Market Square brings residents, it brings students, it brings traders, it brings people from all over the world. It is the one centre where people mix and mingle and sums up what Cambridge is all about. I think therefore we should be thinking how we can make the Market Square something that is special. It has great symbolic importance. It's particularly important to the traders and I think we should cherish the traders far more than we do. I've been round and spoken to traders and they point out just how out of date, how old the equipment that they have. Trestles which are really, shouldn't have been put away years ago. The awnings which are dirty, the cobwebs which hang from the inside of the awnings. And very often where the food is being served. It isn't good enough, we should make the environment much more attractive for the traders so that they can flourish and continue to contribute as they do. The fountain, the remains of the fountain in the middle, really, they would be better in the cemetery in Mill Road. There are lumps of granite which protrude and jut out and people, the traders pointed out, disabled people, people who have poor mobility are often tripping up over the jutting out pieces of granite, of the remains of that fountain. Which is, some is overgrown with weeds, it looks so unattractive. I think we can do, we can do better. This is not worthy of a world-class city. Cambridge prides itself on its nightlife, the night economy is really important. But with no disrespect to Frank's Burger Bar, that is not what I see as the night time economy. The marketplace closes down at five o'clock, from five till nine o'clock the following day, it is desperate. Surely we can do better. This is the heart of Cambridge, the centre. We should not leave it to be a skeleton which is perceived by many people as being threatening and leads to antisocial behaviour. The bins, the bins and storage, there are bikes in places, there are bins in places which are dirty and unkempt and really not how a first-class environment should be. There are no trees, there's no softening of the landscape, there's no seating. There were just so many things that could be done. But what we are proposing is that a small, modest amount of money is set aside to invest in creating a vision for how the Market Square could be transformed. I think it is something we should give priority to because it is really a unique and very, potentially very attractive and important centre to our city life.
Catherine Mayfield.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to talk about the awareness of public arts. Ancient, this world's modern civilizations are judged by the number of artefacts and works of art that they have, that they have just been carried. Some of us admire the ancient Roman, the big works of artists. And some of us, modern ones, do not, the ancient, and some of us, the arts downstairs. How cultured are we here in Cambridge? Do we know how many public works of art we have in Cambridge? There would be a story behind each one of these. I'm not sure that we do. This is what I want to talk to you about today and I want to seek your help. A large command of custom-designed public art across the city has been provided through contribution made by developers, either in kind or through financial contributions which have been agreed in the planning process. Representing a substantial investment, it includes a spectrum of work from nationally organized or locally discovered artists. Yet, it's nowhere publicly catalogued, in a way, it can be easily identified and storied in art. For example, in Queen's ward, we have three semis, remembering the Queen's jubilee. And it incorporates a lot of old kids' drawings there. Nobody knows anything about the history behind it. Even the statue of the first I mentioned, the car with the cat and the mice. I think how many of us know that he used to be an old man back in the seventies or eighties with a white machete? I can't remember his name. Well, it's not a father, yeah. Now, the good news is that the number of developers have indicated a willingness to contribute finance with the design and the creation of a publicly accessible online catalogue. That's very good news and I hear Catherine Smith said, it might not be the right time, but this is the right time. If people are coming and offering you money and they are willing to help, this is the opportunity. And the money is not that much, only fifteen thousand pounds. But this is for it to be successful. We need a commitment from the council which requires to gather edits, the photographic and textual content and publish it on the website, both for the existing and for the historic backlog of future works. So far, as possible data would be published or looked at with appropriate licensing, allowing common rights, so that third-party producers can reuse the information with this. So in my view, this is a very small amount, we should take advantage and the developers are willing to help us. And I believe by supporting this very small item, we're making a huge contribution to Cambridge's global cultural success. Thank you so much.
Catherine Haiden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to seek further support for refugees and asylum seekers. Before I do so, I'd like to thank Councilor Paige Roth for her moving personal statement regarding peer support for rough speakers. When councillors prepare to tell us of such trauma in the own household, to add to our understanding of the difficult issue, I would wish to express our appreciation. Thank you. Turning to our support for refugees and asylum seekers, is this a city of sanctuary or is it not? This time the ten K amendment for three years will provide specialist assistance to refugees and asylum seekers who come to Cambridge outside the Syrian refugee programme. We looked for details of how many would this affect? Thirty in two thousand and fifteen, forty-one last year in two thousand and sixteen. How many do you think it will be this year? The past Sunday, my partner and I welcomed four asylum seekers from Uganda into the city and discussed how they would get assistance. We know that Cambridge Ethnic Community Forum needs the assistance which this funds would give them because their money runs out in October of this year and it will only provide for ten hours per week of specialist support for these asylum seekers. Later on the agenda, you have an excellent amendment to the motion we have to forward on refugees, allowing us this small change to your budget to put real meat onto your support for refugees and asylum seekers.
Counselor Allen?
Well, I'd like to follow Counselor Eadie and also pay tribute to him and also Counselor Gresky who have others in this chamber that are doing refugees. The council a year ago funded a survey by Cambridge Ethnic Community Forum and it's not an easy aspect to survey, the number of refugees and asylum seekers in the city in order to assess their needs. And the first time I got a draft of the report was the day it was this Monday. So it isn't just about advice, it's about English, it's about support, it's about housing, it's about wider immigration issues. So whilst I welcome the principle of requesting this, I have a better answer which is to put a report to the committee which looks at the survey when the final draft of it comes, I've just had an interim draft. I cannot spend the council's money but I give you my commitment that if that includes the need for advice support later in the year, that that will be part of that report. But I don't think that we should just jump in with a proposal because when you see the whole report, there's a lot of other issues that are going to be raised. In terms of numbers, yes, the number of Syrian that the council is proposing to have is a hundred and we're roughly halfway there. In terms of the known numbers of refugees and asylum seekers, it is actually less than the number of people that we are already helping or has been surveyed as less and we all know that data is hard to collect so we don't necessarily know the full story. But I think what I'm, why I'm saying I'm not supporting this is not because we're not going to support it for the second half of the year, we have the opportunity in the mid-year financial review to look at this issue. But because I think that Strategy and Resources Committee needs to have a look at the analysis of this issue. We have children in care, we have, as Counselor Eadie says, unaccompanied asylum seekers, we do have the Home Office being more flexible about the countries that they will include in this programme. So they're now talking about including other Arabic-speaking countries, which suits us because we have two full-time Arabic speakers helping refugees already. So we're not saying no and I've had a good discussion with the leader of the Cambridge Ethnic Community Forum and he accepts that we have a, we will pay the commitment. If there isn't the funding in the second half of the year for this advice, then we will propose as part of the mid-year financial review. And we will bring a report which will look at the wider issues and there are a number of them that vice alone will not address. Whilst I'm on my feet, I may have time, I may run out of time to talk about the Market Square. It's one of about eight issues within the Lib Dem amendment which we're already doing or we can do with existing resources or at least we can start. I'm not saying that we can answer the whole of the Council Tony Cliffs wishes for the Market Square, but we have a hundred and fifty thousand pounds and Counselor Biggs must pick this up because it's in the City Deal Papers for the Assembly. There is a specific supplementary planning document planned which is going to be funded in a way out of our new house bonus, but there is a six-figure sum for a central city public round strategy and I think that is one of the threads. In addition, we will discuss the Cambridge PPF proposal which, again, it needs to have a lot more flesh on the bones because it's only one option and Counselor Biggs quite right to pay credit to the work they've put in, which is very impressive. So I could go through the other elements and some of my friends already have. So we, on public art, on the community database, on a number of these projects, on protecting the park sector, this can be done within existing resources. And the maddest, madcap proposal of all is to gift the County Council one point three five million of street residents income. That is the maddest proposal Counselor Biggs has ever brought to this chamber. The County Council has already agreed that it's going to resolve the issue of park and remove the charge. The City Deal had offered fifty percent of this in terms of the board has said to the County Council, we can do this. So I think that's a nice proposal, we don't need to gift the County Council one point three five million.
Counselor Austin?
First of all, just a response to the council more about the events. I think there's some confusion, I think you actually misunderstood what I said. The point was I was very positive about the events that take place in Cambridge, I think very clearly we're very proud of it. The issue is the mess that's left behind and I think that is exactly what the focus was, the mess that's left behind is because the officers that we actually have who do a fantastic job, not only that either, but they're either persuaded to pay overtime to go and try and service that work before the event and after the event or they're looking at weekends in which to do that because if you think when the events are up, then on the weekends it's happening and that's when supervision is required. Now, because there are times when there aren't officers or a public supervision there, that's when the problems happen. So last year, just to give an example, at the Beer Festival on Jesus Green, there was an artificial road laid for the contractors to drop off the marquees and then to collect them at the end. What happened was those guys came and didn't use those roads, they went on the grass and as a result, I can't remember, it was six weeks or eight weeks, but there was a large area of Jesus Green which was blocked off and fenced off that people couldn't use. It was the heat of summer and people were going, I can fairly quickly explain, getting football runners, whatever it had to be, and they couldn't use it. So that's what I'm trying to address and for a small cost of eight thousand pounds a year, I think that was a reasonable suggestion. Okay, it was sixteen thousand for the first year but as time goes on, you would be actually saving money and it might even balance the book when you looked at the costs of it. So sorry for the confusion in the first place but that was a suggestion. Secondly, turning to the trees, I welcome your acknowledgement of the recognition of the need for further funding and that's great. I'm obviously disappointed that you're not actually going to follow the children's scheme. I'm slightly baffled by the fact that it's not an effective scheme, I don't quite know what you mean by that, I'd like to clarify to be honest with you. It was, what I believe is, an incredibly efficient scheme and the reason it's an efficient scheme is because all the maintenance costs are actually being covered by the schools or the children who planted them and you will know as I'm sure, the cost of the actual tree is about fifty percent of the cost of what the maintenance is for the first three years and I'm not sure how you'll get to then balance those costs and that amount of money to plant the kind of trees as I was suggesting. So I think, you know, great on the one hand but I'm very disappointed about that, we have, I'm sure many disappointed schools have managed to put children in Cambridge. If you're going to extend the baby scheme, that's fine, I would question still the thought I made initially about the fact that when children are first born, their families are very busy prioritising looking after these sort of things, I'm not quite sure where planting a tree necessarily fits into that in those early years of life. Maybe you'll reconsider the children's scheme if you do, I'm more than happy to talk to you about it and try and shape it in some way that is maybe more acceptable. Thank you.
Counselor Singer?
Thank you. I'll use speak first in support of our proposals on parking charges. The higher parking charges on Sunday mornings seem particularly designed to penalise our city sector churches. None of the shops are open until a Sunday due to the Sunday trade rules, so charges earlier than that will fall on those attending churches such as St Mary's, St Benetts, St Andrews and many other places of congregation. The churches in this city provide valuable support for many of our most vulnerable residents. The support of churches like St Mary's to work with the homeless is exemplary and penalising their congregation on a Sunday morning seems like core thanks for the work they do. Counselor Blanco says he can't see how to differentiate the charges, while we are offering a solution. I also feel that we are right to suggest that any money raised from increased charges on a Sunday should go towards subsidising the park and ride sites. If we have to encourage those driving in to leave their cars on the edge of the city, thus reducing not only the cost, reducing not only the cost but the hassle factor of the park and ride is surely a key priority. I was disappointed that the joint amendment of the Labour and Liberal Democrat groups on the County Council last week did not achieve this outcome as we hoped it would. However, given that the Conservatives' charter chose to reject our amendment and push through a budget full of cuts rather than investment, I would hope that this council would do all in its power to rectify their judgment. And Counselor Herbert is quite wrong to say that it would be mad for this council to give the County Council money. Counselor's objection and admission are invalid, which should be of serious concern to members of this council. Residents of this city have these issues dealt with and quickly and if the County Council refuses to act, this council, for this council to simply wash its hands of responsibility when it could do something is far more than mad. For someone who has emphasised his record across council working, I am shocked that Councilwoman Lewis should dismiss working with the council, County Council or Park and Ride. Discouraging individuals and families from driving into Cambridge should be a key aim of transport policy and subsidising park and ride is one of the many small changes that can make a big difference. It is a carrot and not a stick and it has widespread public support across the city. Finally, I want to ask for your support for our proposal on investment for young people's engagement in democracy. I see that the administration has proposals for supporting children up to, engaging the children up to eleven and that is good, but surely it is secondary aged children who would benefit the most from the opportunity to understand how government, both local and national, functions and how it affects their lives. And I would urge that this work be better focused on secondary aged peoples who are more likely to understand the issue closer to making personal decisions. Counselor Johnson says that Democratic voters will ready go and encourage people to vote, but the intention of this line was far more than simply encouraging people to vote. What we want to encourage is greater understanding that leads to real engagement in political debate, a significantly different aim from just telling people how and where. I'm horrified that Counselor Sinne implies that sixteen to eighteen year olds, their window is closed for political engagement. I absolutely disagree with that statement. As somebody who lives with two children of that kind of age, they are extremely engaged in politics as are many of their friends and they are particularly engaged at the moment following Brexit vote and the election of Donald Trump. We would be mad to be missing the opportunity of engaging our young people in politics.
They're already engaged, they watch family news.
I'm deeply worried by the implication that this means young people should not be involved in other issues out of their own interest. It is pressure like that that leads to a huge rise in that percentage of young people. So I really do urge you to support that, I think it's really important and a tiny moment, thank you.
Counselor Roberts?
I'd also like to wait, if you have a way, I don't want to speak. The issue is, I think it was with Counselor Gresky, I think all the people in this room are accused of not working in partnership or not caring or giving a job about the parking ride. I think Lewis is probably the one that you can't pull that one out. I think the point you made is a very separate point which is that we have to accept that as Counselor Laiton will have to, you can say, we take eleven percent of the council's tax here in this authority and I must admit, Counselor Biggs is probably the only councillor I've ever met in the last seven years or so who thinks that municipal authorities are awash with cash. So moving on, Lewis wants to come to the topic. Lewis highlighted a number of things that I was balancing in relation to the market law. I think it's important as well we don't talk down our market completely, you know, God was given a week to build the world. We'll come on to your Christian centre of politics and exactly, I would give you four, five months to try and saw out the market and in that time, we already now have proposals in place so that just after the election, we'll be looking at the trial of the night market, after the successful trial with the illuminate and so on going forward, which in terms of charging, different things, we're going to make as hospitable to people on the marketplace and also independence here we can. We are already looking at elements to attractable sites for markets, to deal with different issues. Counselor Tony Cliff raises for example the awnings. When I replaced Counselor O'Brien covering the market, one of the first things I said to all the officers, which bright smile came up the idea to have white awnings? Every, it's white and blue, white and red, white, it was you. So let me say it tactically, equally based at the Burger Bar, it was you. It raises that it's not been done in the area for fourteen years, fourteen years, where suddenly, quite interestingly, the market becomes, correct, I find that the interest in the market is correct, almost descending with market war in terms of electoral winability and marginality. I sometimes feel that your group is completely captured by its leader because there's very little, often very much, amendments. Firstly, they involve mainly because the council, if Shari doesn't turn up. And secondly, not for the first time, several times since you've had me, but equally because there's something in there for other areas of Cambridge. It's as if the only place in Cambridge that matters is the city centre. And I was not saying that that's not important, it's not for many of you to do. But talking about deprivation, talking about the fact that the market is somewhere that everyone experiences, some of the causes that everyone experiences, but one of the key parameters where we came in and in years before was the very fact that many poor people, many people are the most deprived at the end, don't come into this territory. And it's investment in those areas which was neglected and so on, hence why myself, Counselor Smith now and others, put in things like environmental courses to make sure cleaning is spread equally amongst all. Equally, where there have been rises in market fees under Counselor O'Brien and inflationary almost myself, seventy percent since September, more money is now spent cleaning the market. So in the short time, you also have that and also Christian, look at the independent adjudicators of all of this, look at the people who actually give up the awards to markets, we won a national award only recently on the set market. And no one is saying the market is perfect, no one is saying that it doesn't really be invested. What we're saying is that amongst the vehicles that are already there, as Counselor Herbert has highlighted, there's an element always in the public project amendments for jamming tomorrow and it's jamming tomorrow to play to certain groups here. You know, the church group now is being, it's a deeply rich in Cambridge. It's if, you know, Saturday morning, Sunday morning is obviously quite important, they go around in the church with the calendar, quite like the Jewish community on a different day, or the Muslim community on Friday. Oh, no, they're not deeply interested in your awards. Now, on top of the rest of this, you know, in the age of Trump and Brexit and fake news, people talk about this as a recent phenomenon. I've been involved since I was fourteen, sadly under John May's government, when I was in the 1970s before I switched over. You invented that, you as far as I'm concerned. You invented that to use as far as I'm concerned.
Castle Austin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to go back five years to when I got elected. I don't think it was filmed at that time, I don't think it made the comments. My opinion was about consultation, consultation, consultation. Because if David Trump had did that, it's their key policy. And yet, when it was read out, they actually had word of him to say, did he listen to consultation? Did he deem it necessary, although they trumpeted it? We do believe in consultation, that's why the Riverside moorings are being consulted on, that's why we brought a tree policy in so people can be consulted on. We hear a lot about people who are affected by trees because there's a lack of them. There's a lot of people in this city who are affected by the trees because it's a nuisance to them as well. There's old folk songs where the trees are blocking out light, where the tree officers deem it's not right to take branches down. So we're bringing a policy out that heavily can be reflected on, so it will be sorted out. Open spaces and the damaged grass, oh, it's amazing, how old are they and people can't use it. I never heard anything about the folk festival, for the fourteen years when Charington Hall is closed off altogether, when the campers ruined Charington Hall, there's never been a mention about going into Charington Hall and getting the grass back. Did we complain? No, because the grass grows back. But it wasn't in the centre of Cambridge, so nobody noticed it. But everybody enjoys it. So I say, can a life at times? It's nice to know Mr Council now listens to residents, because that's what we said three years ago, we listen to our residents, we listen to what we want. We can't do everything in one go. We wish by magic one to tackle all the problems from fourteen years that we're trying to sort out. But we can't sort out fourteen years in two years. But we are doing our best to work these out. And as we've said, there are bodies available, there are public ground where we can look at doing things, and things will be worked round over to as well. The market square, when I came five years ago, that was one of our topics to you. What are you doing about the market square? Nothing, 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 nothing. You didn't do anything about it. Fifty million pounds, fifty million pounds. You want to put that in one of your leaflets as well? Like you sat on fifty million pounds and never did anything with it. We haven't found that by magic, you had it all the time. We challenged you about that money you had, we challenged you to spend it wisely, we challenged you that government funding would be dropping, that money would have to be invested. We were told, we were weighed down and told back paper calculations. When we said officers had calculated our proposals out and deemed them workable, you said rubbish. Well, imagine we found fifty million in back packet calculations, how much could we have got with our proper calculations? And no wonder sixteen and nineteen year olds don't want to come down, come down to a council chamber quarter to ten. If you want it, yes, yeah, no. Why don't we make the council meetings more, more open? Why not a better time to do it? And listen to meaningless amendments that take up unnecessary time, when we've heard already that all your amendments, the planning one as well, there's a great one as well. So we have somebody who's been twelve months to sort out planning, what happens for the next twenty years after planning? Our problem is the planning inspector, he causes the problems, weren't told by our residents that we're allowing certain jobs to be done. Yet what it is, is the planning inspector who overrules the officers, overrules the councillors. You want to go look at your own board, put it in this, where we went to try to start a development, and everybody was against it, the council, the residents, what happened? The planning inspector turned around and said, go ahead. How many of us as councillors go up to our residents to object? And the councillors spend their time saying, you know what, we agree with you, we wrote a committee, we spent hours debating it, and then what happens? It goes to the planning inspector and he turns around and says, no, case, open road, they can build what they want. So it's not an enforcement officer we want, it's actually a planning inspector who listens to the residents and the council in these cases.
Why are you fixing it? Through the chair, please.
So like I said, I'm pleased to know you're listening to residents now. I didn't hear anything about consultation, so maybe you did learn the lesson, that consultation to your side is not the way to go.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I would greatly for if later in the evening, I may have spoken in this particular debate, the executive council for previous services, clarifying this point about individual lack of representation and funding, which came in town focus, I think he prefers twenty-three K for the award in twenty fifteen. I would greatly be clarified, there's a waiting for some of the math, ninety K ongoing, thirty K already. I would, however, I'd like to put on record my discretion of this statement, this is not a good use of council resources. We can't ignore the current problems with engagement affecting young people. We're politicians, we're engaged in government of this city, it is not our problem whose is it. Turning to councillor Sinna's speech, I find it surprising that she spoke enthusiastically, as of course the proposals for twelve fifteen year olds, given her statement to sixteen, eighteen year olds, a city too busy with its hands. It appears she believes G C seems less important of age. I certainly won't be repeating her view to my own children. She also apparently believes that sixty-four per cent turnout in the election for one of the defining issues in our time affects good engagement. I'd hate to see what disengagement would find. My aunt, please, the councillor, has finally found time to properly read her proposals. She might like, Mr Mayor, to reflect on the hypocrisy of missing in fact your resources committed, if she not yet properly read the papers available or in advance. Given her previous accusations in a community services committee, which she chairs, the council on this side of the chamber was simply lazy when we complained that presenting a revised recommendation twenty-four hours before committee did not give proper time for scrutiny. And I hope she'll take the time to apologise for her previous statements.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I've got my expectations, I've gone along, I've come with proof of our speeches. My first expectation, I managed to wash my hands, it was like a pretty much a pool of alcohol for me. So it's very bad, too jacked up. But this is really a patient, I mean, it turns out that this story is already for us. Very little of what goes on, this is, this is the place where United is come to die, basically. And it's just not collaborative enough, frankly. And we need to, we need to better serve our residents by trying to be a bit more collaborative. Which is, I mean, there really hasn't been one speaker here tonight, because after change came his team or anything, and that was more like testimony than the sort of speech. And I think that's, I think we're wanting to reflect on that, and I'm sure we are. The payment scheme, I don't have that much experience of how it works in that context, but certainly I've seen it where I've very largely seen street children in India, and payments are such a strong and important tool. But I think that's an idea that you want to pick up on, I'll, you know, report you if you do that, adopt it this time, that next time. But I think you have to remember, this is a project, this isn't about doing the last visit council a year before, or five years ago, or the last fourteen years. And every time, some of, you know, our colleagues say, it's history, I said, about what happened fourteen years ago, what we're trying to do is what we're trying to do now, what to do now. So history's all fine and good, but we've got to look at what we've got to do now. So I just want to pick up on one area of our thinking, which is on the commitment to funding the housing, in reference to funding commercial property. I have nothing against commercial property per se, but it has a good speculative return, but we should not be in the business of making a speculative return. We should be, as councillor Bitt described, we should be looking to enhance social patterns much as anything. We all know the issues, and we all know that the council's doing something. We all know it has taken some steps, always suggesting there's more steps, that we invest more money in this sector, that we have good opportunities to make good investments that can make a difference, and we should take those opportunities whilst we can. And in so doing, we create a more diversified portfolio of apartments, we create a more diversified community in those areas, because we're creating a different, another strata within mixed communities, which is from all that you do. But we are in two of an actual sense, and I may be the late partner, likes to wear the hair shirt afterwards, and he is being beaten up, causing a recession, although that's true of our family, so that's where they like to wear the hair shirt now, with being with financial top team. But let's just think about whether we really want to be exposed to a small number of towns who won't go pay the rent if they make a bad business decision, or if the economy goes bad, then we have a small number of broken towns who owe us money. Rather than if we've invested in a larger number of diversified, smaller properties with residential tenants, we can at least manage that situation much more strongly, much more actively, and if necessary, we can look for that, much harder with big chunky investments. So I ask you to look at what we're proposing on some of these areas, and I'm pleased that some of them are getting some traction, whether now or in the future, or become part of the planning for next year. And remember that this is a project, we're not doing the accounts. Look forward, and on the housing side of things, just accept that a diversified portfolio is a much stronger portfolio.
Castle Kenshaw?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I'm going to touch on a couple of points. Firstly, councillor Price quite rightly says the ruling group policy acting in the interest of those most needed in the city. I'd certainly echo that from Mike Dushon on my side. Last I remember, Abbey Ward was a Labour ward, East Cheshington was a Labour ward, both wards have moorings in them, both wards. Not seeking to lecture, just seeking to echo the voice of those residents who are mooring users. I mean, the actions should speak louder than words, and so your actions this evening as the ruling group could be to accept our amendment in relation to moorings. It has no financial impact, because that two per cent is already built into the base budget, no financial impact. But you take away, you take away that emotional distress for an amendment to the community. And councillor Roberts talks about fake news, well, let's drill down a little further on the moorings policy.
East Cheshington doesn't have moorings, by the way. Sorry.
Through the chair, please.
Let me just correct councillor Roberts, because I'm looking at the paper that came to Strategy and Resources in relation to moorings policy in October, and there are two interesting features about, firstly, East Cheshington does have moorings, according to this paper, and it was addressed to the executive council, councillor Roberts. Secondly, the timeline for the consultation was that the consultation would end in December, and the item would come to January scrutiny, January scrutiny, tenth of the tenth, sixteenth. Now, I know councillor Roberts is looking at me a bit bemused, but to be fair, councillor Roberts hasn't really grasped the issue of moorings. He incorrectly told this chamber that we have removed thirty-five thousand savings from, thirty-five thousand additional revenue from the moorings policy in relation to the mid-year financial review. And actually, the answer was no, you've just had to do it. Secondly, secondly, even at scrutiny last week, he did not have the grasp of the detail on the numbers. So it's very clear, sorry, councillor Robertson I'm saying, not councillor Roberts, councillor Robertson. So, Mr Mayor, the facts are very simple. This issue could have come to scrutiny immediately, you could have taken the decision, you could have built that into your budget, you could have taken away that emotional distress from those residents, you chose not to. Now, as I said earlier, Mr Mayor, the public will decide whether you did that deliberately or just because you copped up. And actually, if you look, if you look, Mr Mayor, I think what should happen is the leader should take charge of this. It's been around all the executive councillors, I question whether the con-executive councillor has a direct conflict of interest as a con-conservator. I have sent him an email asking this question, he's yet to reply to me, I hope he will in the near future. I think they should go to the leader, and the leader should take a decision, and he has an opportunity this evening to take that decision and put to rest this financial issue for a key component of the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I'm feeling like the man sticking his head in the lions up, any further debate? Please, spell the moorings. With that, councillor Robertson, you have the right to reply.
Sorry, sure.
You must be.
How affronted you seem to be by others coming with any other ideas than the ones you thought of. Any outsider listening to this debate would be struck by that. Having said that, I would like to welcome support offered by councillor Gell, I speak for the points you mentioned in the speech, that's supported very well. I'd also like to welcome councillor Smith's support for the item we proposed on replacing tree farms. There really was no other choice, I think. You have nine thousand in a budget, replacing a tree costs ninety pounds, you buy a hundred trees in a year, the forecast rate of loss of trees in a year is two hundred and twenty. So that had to be done, and I'm really pleased and happy that you bought that and feel number it and support it. And I'd like to acknowledge that councillor Smith has also promised us a review, reviews are dangerous and sometimes slippery things, but a review about, so we've really bet on open spaces and the potential to ensure they're monitored to provide better to protect the fabric. Let's see what happens. I said at the beginning that we would, we would watch you afterwards, this debate, and we will watch you on that. And in the case of, I don't know what councillor ever said you would look at now, but we welcome it anyway.
Refugees.
Refugees, that's the one, that's the one, yeah. Well, yes, that's, that's very welcome too, and we'll watch that carefully and hope that that's just not a way, as you can, a bad decision to another day, but I hope that's not the case. I would like to take issue with a couple of points that were made from the other side. First of all, with councillor Price on the question of the inventory support scheme. It is though not true about different institutions, hostels and tenancies, that support is attached to those people who are occupying those places. And that actually, of course, adds to the richness of what is available for people. But I think that the perspective that we, as the city council needs to adopt, is one where we are looking for people to progress through those hostels and into tenancies and into tenancy potential without support. And the need here for progression, not support that you say goodbye to when you leave one place of a boat and go into another. That is the new thing that is brought by this scheme. And I think it's a, it's a great shame after the testimony of councillor Page, in a speech that must have been difficult earlier, bring that awareness away of the human side of this, but it was not, that councillor Price was not, you know, to accept this idea, which is supportive, he knows it, within the professional community supporting rough speakers. I'd like also to take issue with councillor Herbert. The market square, he's doing it. Well, I'm afraid that isn't the case. He knows as well as I do, he's asked questions and listened to the right people, that when Cambridge Past President and Future took their ideas to the council, they were told that the council didn't have the capacity for it. That's the reason for our amendment here. Nibbling at it, small improvement, I know that, you've got them up your sleeve, but the thing that the market square needs is the building of a honest ambition, something that we can build, maybe slowly towards, but at least know where our destination is. That is still lacking, and there's been no commitment for that coming out of this debate that I've heard. And I'd also like to challenge his belief that it's the man's proposal that's the thing that I may guess. Well, about the park and ride and the city council's potential to support, I know it's difficult, councillor Price, but I will, I will, I will say I'm proud of that proposal. And I believe because to any outsider, to any resident in this city, the fact that councillor Herbert is protecting his barony in Guildhall whilst the county council are managing all their own problems, all their own problems under him, and that never the train shall meet on the subject of parking, which is clearly part of the same business, it's part of the transport equation, and it is absolutely unbelievable that he counts the military's potential, where the council has two hundred thousand pounds apparently for this reducing prices by, and you can't put those people to something more productive. As has been customary in the case, we will be offering the opposition, resilient against certain points, the opportunity to have a cafeteria approach to voting, as well as the comrades in one, in just a moment. camaraderie one in just a moment.
Spot on. Any further debates? Then I'll call on councillor Robertson to provide a reply, you have five minutes.
Well, you want a spring colour to the budget? Actually, I'm expecting a spring orange colour. What happened to you, house orange people? Right, Park and Ride, it is generally funded by the county, as has been told, been told the city of York County as well, it is really communicative, we're asked to put our own money into that as well, it's just not ours. Moorings. I think you've even forgotten, councillor Johnson, the consultation was extended until January, it didn't finish until January because we wanted to give more time to the moorings and the voters, and while the city wants to be consulted, I think you both have come on right. And that goes to the root of it, we are intent on having a proper consultation and full assessment of the findings, and we're digging into the services we are providing and the cost of providing them, and we totally wrong to preach out anything before we actually come to that one. And that's the emotional distress, it's you who are stirring it up, frankly, it's certainly not ours.
It's real.
We were not preaching this issue at all. Our overall strategy is to look ahead for five years, and you started off asking us why we were allowing this, why we're not spending more money now. But the answer is, we are planning for five years ahead, but figures do show in five years' time, there would be more money than we actually need for our specific minimum reserves, but anything can happen in five years, some of the savings we've predicted might not happen. We are being prudent and careful in the way we manage the money with the city. We're not going to be stampede into taking on extra commitments when they're not in our priorities. Some proposals are for work already being done, and we have considered the projects prepared, we have considered the currently, we've referred our responses, but as I say, some of the proposals are already being done, others do not meet our priorities or await full consideration, including the strategy. Moorings is a strategy under development, it isn't there, it doesn't happen to fit in to the timetable for certain budget, we will come to it when we can and recover from a second. The same goes for other projects as well. We have accepted the public ground trees proposal, and the paper put forward this proposal, and dealing with its funding has been prepared and will be circulated. Turning to commercial property investment, I need to address the proposal the Liberal Democrats put forward. Last October, we set aside further £20 million for investment in buildings, like offices and warehouses. That money is part of the £50 million we have been able to release from languishing in the council's bank accounts. The Liberal Democrats claim this should be invested in housing, one of their amendments seeks to divert half of the £20 million to buy houses on the oral depot side when they're built, and then rent them out in the prepared for sale market rents, as all this chest. The problem is that those houses won't get burnt for two or three years, and our strategy is to get them to ongoing need much earlier than that. We're getting on with developing schemes to build 500 houses, but it takes time, time to get a program of that size going. We're not prepared to defer investment, which will bring us better returns than are available on the money markets. Well, that is not to say that we will never invest general fund money in size like a debt life. It could be, that's what we're moving, it could be done by making further use of the money we hold in term of borrowing, or by external borrowing. Many other councils are doing that, they're borrowing money to invest in housing. There's no, our strategy is still evolving. There's no point in assuming it's not going to happen, it may never work, but it's much too early to decide on that right now. And there's certainly, our investments in commercial property is certainly not speculative, they're deemed to be long-term and will serve the city well into the future. So we'll continue with our strategy and vote this proposal down. Right, the answer, this is about the electoral team and funding through to 2020. Funding through to 2020 has been funded by the Cabinet Office beyond the engagement, so that's the answer to that one. So we will now move to voting on this, on the amendments, and we will vote, we'll go to the senior, voting them all down, and then.
Come now, ladies and gentlemen, we're halfway. Nineteen speakers at the last, everybody should have their right to speak, nineteen speakers. I'm not going to put the cap on democracy, but what we're doing, what we're banging amongst ourselves is eating up time, we'll be home watching the Baywatch's on. All of us, in case of emergency. We now have a recording vote for the Liberal Democrat group alternative budget, could I ask members, when they indicate to keep their hands up, my microphone is here. Because this is a recording vote, and so it will be recording in here, so when they indicate that you can put your hands down, okay, everybody's voting. Okay? So all those in favour of the Liberal Democrat group alternative budget, please, please show.
Okay, that's thirteen, thank you.
And all those against?
So that's twenty-two against.
Now, does the Liberal Democrat group leader request that several votes be taken on any individual proposals within the alternative budget?
We're deceiving that.
Surprisingly, I've been surprised with that, which may have someone. Voting in part of the Liberal Democrat amendment, I'm going to take these in the order that they've been presented to me, so page 301, B0001, support for refugees and asylum seekers, all those in favour, please show.
Okay, that's thirteen.
And those against? Page 301, 2, B0002, peer mentoring support for single homeless people, all those in favour, please show.
That's thirteen.
And those against?
Twenty-two.
Thank you. Page 300. Oh, sorry.
Oh, you are.
I have to. I'm waiting to advance the amount. Page 302, B0004, public ground tree replacement, all those in favour?
Oh, right. This one. Okay, thanks, I'm going to remember something.
Page 303, B006, parking charges on Sundays in the Grand Arcade, all those in favour, please show.
Twelve.
And, and those against? We now have a group of amendments which have been lumped together on the Liberal Group, so these are, B0007, provision of free parking that can use public wide signs, Monday to Tuesdays. II001, these are pages from, I'm sorry, II001, parking charges on Mondays and Tuesdays, and II002, parking charges on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. All those in favour, please show.
That's twelve.
And those against? Page 303, B008, moorings charges, all those in favour?
Ninety-three.
And those against?
Twenty-three.
We now have another two that have been lumped together, they're on pages 304 and 310, C0001, switch your commercial property investment strategy to residential, and RI001, difference between residential property investment for market rent and commercial property investment, all those in favour, please show. And those against?
Twenty-four.
Page 306, X0001, market square B U, all those in favour?
Ten.
And those against?
Twenty-three.
And page 309, X0005, children's tree programme, all those in favour?
Ten.
And those against?
Twenty-three.
Thank you. Right, we now turn to the executive budget recommendations for the debate. Does anyone wish to speak?
God, imagine.
Councillor Gell.
I've got to say, I've got a couple of things. As for our respect for the market traders awards, it's something that we can be proud of, that if you speak to market traders, a lot of them are furious with winning awards because they feel market management can take credit for things that they can do much longer than they can with the council. As far as talking down the market, we, we have to be thorough in our assessment of it, but we do have bits, Destination Management Organisation and Cambridge Live, we were all arms and legs organisations, but happy to talk it up, and it's up to us to take a fair assessment of the problems there. The nine market, it's a scheme that Cambridge did pushing, it's loads of loyalty cards taken to the centre, that market traders wouldn't let it fall in any of those credit card areas. So we shouldn't let Cambridge do it, we should be letting the market traders have their say, I think, heritage organisations have their say, because living as it is, Cambridge goods will either stay the way they want to stay, or it will collapse. Markets will always be a country of selling, using or losing the market, because of seven hundred traders. That's suggested by councillor Chair, as well as Mayor, Mayor of London, to be able to talk to market traders, because the conditions are so hard for them, and they play a key role, and that's absolutely key in keeping local goods available. So, yeah, as we've said before, the councillor has bloody had the responsibility as well for a short time, but it's not ever the master's fault that they've been doing executive roles around. We, you know, we're deeply into it, but we do have to take the needs of traders and what is the needs of, which is the wider setting in terms of what people would like to see when they show.
Thank you, councillor Roberts.
What we have to hear live, I'm very much standing down to the executive councillor in May, sorry, I've got my wrong, but, in as far as you're clearly, oh, I'm never going to go to the, 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 okay, I'm sorry, um, okay, I'll, 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 um, just a few things. First things, the nine market element list that I suggested a minute ago, one of the key things which I'm trying to be placed out for whoever replaces me in May, has, when they inherit a portfolio, I'm very keen that any nine market in Cambridge, not only has a very nominal feature in terms of, or actually probably the best way to put it, is that there's a section of the market in nine which is social causes. Now, I know you work with, as you've been like Alex Pollas, Food Cycle, people, compensation, many people involved in some of the issues for the nightlife, and issues for the food cycle, and issues to do with making Cambridge a more viable place in nine, is using the market not just as a revenue generation and so on, and you're saying led by, this element is led by us, and it's slightly different, it's nuanced, this is led by us, is something of it, is to have a section of it which is essentially for many of those organisations at a no-rent basis, so they can do something good on the market, see if it works. So hopefully that will be in place, obviously this will, I think it's also important to bear in mind that whilst we have changed our code, we've restructured the portfolio, it wasn't just people changing position, we've structured them to rebalance them, mainly in line with the fact we now have shared services, and equally councillor Smith has taken on this package of sustainable basis for the first time, which is a more logical way of doing this. In the short time I have had markets, we also listen to you, because you've raised the issue, and councillor Mark Smart as well raised this issue, about putting priority on having reduction packaging on the market, and now applicants to the market, a judge on one of the criteria is the viability of their packaging, and also putting preference on a whole range of people coming to the market who improve sustainability. I don't, when it comes to the market, I just feel that sometimes it's too easy to talk things down almost. People carry on about market is firstly, the new problem, which is clearly, I have been in Cambridge since 2006, when I first arrived in the city, the very first thing I saw were boy races on Market Square and people being sitting in the market, in Market Square. The market, the market's always had sometimes an old hybrid, which, the issue, it's never been tackled. The way that I see it is incremental change, with some semblance of, now, it's very good and great coming along now and saying, you know, constantly pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing and saying that people who work and use the market, their face and work and so forth, should, shouldn't essentially have better conditions and better things and so on. We live in a period of change, if we want to spend more money on the market, if we want to spend more money on cleaning, we have to raise that money. In my world, we wouldn't really need to do that, we have properly funded services and so forth, that we wouldn't need to put so much pressure on other people constantly, as I hear you give things, the moorings as well, but that's not the world we live in. It's not a world of my design, it's not a world of my vision, it's very much a world that they create.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor B.
To ask this, I'm going back to the presentation of the executive's budget at the beginning, and noting that a lot was said about the anti-poverty strategy, which is something that from the side we've been always supported the executives of, but I think I'm becoming increasingly frustrated by the way this is a strategy that is conducted behind the curve, as it were. The considerable amount of money has been put into this fund, and perhaps the problems executive council reminds us from the beginning how much that is now, but recently, there have been instituted rules which prevent anything that costs less than £75,000 getting discussed by councillors, or anyone except you anyways, discussing these proposals, these projects, before they just happen, and then we hear about them, talk about nearly afterwards. And then, since these new rules came along, we've got a series of projects that are apparently being approved, started by asking, miraculously, one at £73,000, no, just missed coming in front of any elected councillors on this side anyway, and then another at £70,000, just back us this too, it looks a bit fishy, but these all seem to be coming along nicely, just below the level that anyone gets over them except you. And, I mean, this is obviously a serious and important subject, but one that I'm surprised that you don't want us to engage, all members of the council, clearly you do, and I do think that there are going to be some reasons to do that, I mean, because it's been going for a while now, and I think that, you know, we should be expecting to see a point at which we say, so this has been happening for a couple of years, what impact has that had on poverty? I think it's a perfectly reasonable and fair question. The point of doing this is to, is to be poverty, we want to see those inequalities and that The point of doing this is to, is to bring poverty, we want to see those inequalities and that poverty refuse. So how are we measuring that? What is the cost of mine, I think? But I would like to see from the executive councillor, as we're going to be voting on budget, including this extra amount, I'd like to hear from the executive councillor, whether we can review this means by which the projects that they are seeing to be seen by the rest of the council before, until they happen. And whether we will be looking at some means and saying, yes, you mentioned progress, but challenges remain. It sounds like someone is measuring us somewhere, so can we please all hear about that, and so we can all share in that satisfaction? Because apart from you saying it, and telling us money has been spent on it, we don't really know, and that means the public doesn't really know either.
Thank you. Councillor Murray?
I wanted to speak briefly in support of the street lights project proposals. It's something that Phil Potts told me about, he spent quite a long time campaigning against the council council cuts last year, and people are really afraid that they've changed their minds. I will point out that that is certainly an area where we did work with the council to fund something that they didn't want to fund. I think that the improved brightness of the street lights is really going to help with improving safety and experience for people that are out and about in Cambridge at night, and we know that's a lot of different people, we've got very migrant at the time, I mean, we've got a lot of shift workers, students, councillors leaving their meetings, so we were all ready for the street lights, and so I think that giving us all enough money is a change worth making.
Councillor Agnes?
Thank you, Mr. May. I too want to speak pretty briefly about a wall to your head that's close to my heart personally. I became politically active in my teens, and I've always had an interest in youth issues, engaging with young people. I'm pretty sure that whether or not I've done that part of the step one, say, years ago, our elders would still be screaming our opinions from the rooftops. But I'm less certain that she would have made it onto the stage for Lake Party Conference, aged fourteen, to our youth of about sixty. And we all try to do what we can for our own children, and I think as a city, it's really important that we try and encourage engagement with all young people, not just those that we personally need to. I also know that I used to have no interest whatsoever in controlling the party conference, which is probably the sensible one there. But the parties have very strong views about the Jesus Green scare part, and I sent around to friend councillor Barry's house to deal with those. The point I'm trying to make is that there's no one perfect way to engage with young people, to find out their views, or, most importantly, to make them an active part of decision-making within the city. I think our chief team do a wonderful job engaging with young people on a variety of projects, and they've had presentations of how young people feel about their new city particularly interested. And I know a lot of that engagement work is targeted at some nine-to-twelve age range, and I did welcome this funding coming to expand that to include all the children. I think there's an important point here about continuity. It's all well and good to engage them as an event, as a one-off, to reap, but to reap the rewards engagement in full, it needs to be a process ongoing through childhood, so interaction with us as a council and with wider civil society becomes the norm for them. Many other areas already have youth councils, which might be a route we end up taking. But I agree, we have a confidence that the best way to develop a project to engage with those in their early teens is to meet them on their level, allow them to decide what shape the project should take, and have real sets of ownership and outcomes. So the funding to our offices to facilitate events and discussion with twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds in the city can only enrich our decision-making, and I look forward to the results.
Thank you. Councillor Erna?
I just want to respond to councillor Bate's point. I think overall, I'm sure that we can have a think and a review about, well, is there a point here or not? But there's a point that we have made, and that has to be made in this chamber, so that others are aware of it. The fund that's been set up is just about the same as the climate change fund that the Liberal Democrats have set up. As far as the same problem, so the Liberal Democrats may want in opposition a different set of orders, but in power, this is the rules that you set up. So I'm not being negative, because I think there's always roots to look at issues, and councillor Johnston and I have had a discussion about, well, how can we take the work that we've built on, which is, I think, impressive, but still to be improved by any good project further forward? But I looked at the list, the twenty-five projects which I've assembled myself, because I had nothing to do at Christmas too. And there were two projects out of twenty-five that fit into this category, so don't misrepresent us, councillor Bate. There's two projects that are sort of near this mountain twenty-five. Of course, we would like, and I think councillor Avery mentioned it earlier on, I think there is room at times for us to do really good work, and a lot of really good work is done in scrutiny. I hope you recognise that it excuses me to listen, we do accept amendments. I would say, in a slightly more open spirit than I recall, particularly under one of your leaders, who basically said that, took the view that any amendment by Labour was an admission of guilt and a failure. So we can always improve, and I know that councillor Johnston is one of the most reflective people in this chamber, so when I think about it. But there is still also the annual review, which is a great opportunity to look at everything that's been done. And priest scrutiny is God, you can actually achieve things by looking hard on yourself in the little way you're doing it.
Thank you. With no further debate, councillor Robertson, you have the right to reply. You have five minutes.
I won't take that long, I don't think. We've had a long debate, we've covered pretty well every issue very thoroughly, so I think we should be able to find out some rest now. Just on the question of strategy behind the curtain, this sort of rubbish. There is a penalty we will introduce, which enables small capital schemes to be processed more quickly by, the original schemes are put through scrutiny and approved, you can apply, but when it comes to delivery, we don't need to go through the process of ignoring our report. Scrutiny reports on each of these small schemes, and thereby I think we must be referred to, that's over seventy-five thousand pounds, it's the small capital schemes. We had a big log chat with the small capital schemes, and need to address it, and this is one of the procedures we introduce. Other than that, we can't do anything else, let's care about how it is, and maybe you've just been given, it refers to showing how we fund the trees project. That's the part I'll ask for this hour, maybe later on then.
Thank you. We have a major decision to make now, folks. We must now decide, because it's now fast approach at ten thirty, whether we wish to continue with the meeting this evening, or reconvene on Monday and do it all again. All those in favour of us going here and continuing with this meeting this evening, please show. Thank you. And so now we can move on, move the vote on the executive budget, including the amendment, the trees amendment, which has just been circulated, and has been indicated in early debate, we haven't had a face. And again, this is a recorded vote, so if, when you're voting, you keep your hands up to indicate, my assistants have got the, have got the full details. All those in favour of the executive budget, please show.
All right, that's twenty-four, okay.
And those against? I'm now going to continue with the agenda, agenda item six, but after this, after this item, I will be having another short break. Councillor Satt?
I didn't care till earlier, Chair, and I'm a student accommodation, I'm an employee of the University of Cambridge, and also Trinity College. So whether I have to care with interest or not, that will be hugely counted on, so I won't be participating in this debate.
Right, we now turn to you to item six of the agenda, Cambridge's local planning evaluation, both proposal modifications for student accommodation, gypsies and travellers, and accessible homes, and the report is dispatched as a separate document to be delivered. Executive councillor, so if you introduce, you have up to five minutes.
There's a bit of my reading on the back of the budget session report for you all. I hope many of you at least had the opportunity to read through the summary, which will be reported. This has come up from the current past hearing group, and the format is that I'm going to recommend to all councillors, what we're going to do, two point one, modifications proposed, sustainability appraisal, the appendices, evidence submitted, and evidence placed in the virtual local plan. And the importance of this, time-wise, is that here sessions, which the councillor will be building, obviously, our policies and depending on our policies, and in terms of the housing, student accommodation, the matters are likely to be held in April, we need to obviously have enough time to submit all this documentation to the inspector, reviewed, that being taken before those hearings, so that is the sort of procedural time schedule behind this. In terms of the three elements, the gypsies and traveller assessment, this has been updated across the county, and with the district council play our part in an integral member of that assessment, that that is one of the counties which we pick up. And that assessment has been updated in line with national legislation requiring of various councils to update their assessment and that's been done. Similarly, the lifetime homes, lifetime homes, element of this proposal. Essentially, we had a previous commitment, a intended commitment for lifetime home within our policy, and we obviously went sort of playing a stoppage in that, but it's been sort of taken up nationally within the broad regulations, the part end regulations, therefore we have to accept that that is the case, and in one of the cases, this case is to acknowledge that that is the case, and we have to tend to our sort of policy to meet national guidelines and national policy. The student accommodation study, I think various people had ideas of what this would bring forward, and a few sort of aspirations of what that may sort of be covered us to do as a result. But it was done because it involved a, obviously, cooperation with all the student, sorry, institutions in the city. It was done in partnership with them, done rigorously, and it's thrown up some interesting statistics that you probably picked up on. How many have realised that there are forty-six thousand students in this city at the present time, not me, or anybody else? That's quite a really, uh, number, that would just shows you how significant the student population, academic population is in the city. Census, it told us that one hundred and twenty-three thousand last census, it was a population of all forty-six thousand, probably that vast of students in the category. In terms of what we're trying to achieve in terms of qualifications, and I'm trying to stick to the pertinent points, clearly have to acknowledge the capability, the amount of pressures within the neighbourhood, and that's partly why we commission the study. We commissioned it with Oxford City Council, we have similar pressures, they didn't have such a, fair to say, a similar sort of participation rate from some of their institutions, they were a little bit concerned by that. Okay, well, let's see, I'll just need to, I'll get a chance to come back, yes? Okay, in which case I'll try and, it'll be my own way. There's obviously reference here to the national policy framework, and that is an important element that we must take into account. We have to square this policy, student policy, with both local and national guidelines, and we have to, time, better than mine.
We now move to, we now move to debate, councillor Avery?
Thank you, Mr. May, very brief, I felt so long time, woke up, I'm tired of all this missing, so I have these, lots of papers twice now. I think what I would say is, the topic of really, actually quite interesting. One thing you learn very quickly is that there's a really complex part, numbers can really, really include in all this sort of stuff. To build on the, the student accommodation, it was just much enlightening to read this and see to the odds of that. And as a big, it comes to a point of everyone to say, you know, a lot of people think that because you've got a supplement to plan to keep accommodations all sorted, and the working problems, of course, that's not, this is guidelines, so trying to resolve problems, so. Some of that came through, I think, in our community, where we all are, I hope we achieved more than we could. So I think we have to welcome this document and accept that it's just a basis for further discussion when the time comes, if people come with proposals. But we do have to strengthen some of the ideas, I think the idea that when a speculative developer of student accommodation comes forward with a plan, they have to now more rigorously tie in the education institution that they are relying on, as it's the app, it's going to supply the students. It's a great idea, whether it will work, quite assuming my design, we don't know, because it's, I think, probably pushing at the envelope, or is enforceable, but we'll see. So on our side, I think we recognise it's more for a lot of work, it's a hell of a process, it's a learning game, whether they will plan, they're more proud to resolve on that, because this is so important to them, correct? The other two items that are part of this plan, the gypsies and accessible home and stuff, I think were driven by changes force last. One in terms of the definition of what a councillor just recovering, the other in relation to accessible homes, as I think councillor Brentley said, so it's a weakening of what we, what we'd like to have, if we could, to have free hand, and it shows that we set a higher standard, and we've been starting to draw down that standard by their national rules. So very happy with the job, and very happy with the work, and very happy with the support that this office, councillors, in those meetings.
Councillor Roberts?
Sorry, to mention, to mention the address that I'm running inactive, I'm a very surprised for sixteen university colleges, so I won't participate in this.
Erna?
Yeah, I mean, my points are terribly profound, some of them have been made by my parent, Dr. Gary, councillor Avery, in particular today. I do want to report my thanks to the working, the planning officers, to the people, I mean, the fact that we've got Joanna Gilbert Lordridge here today, and we've received twenty-two eleven, I think, head over four days, for it. It's a team that has really got a huge amount of work, and I have raised a couple of types of ministers, some of the oddities and dangers of this part-time planning inspection, because it gives the impression that there's something up with the local plan. There is nothing wrong with our local plan, or the plans with South Cambridgeshire, and I just like to thank the assistance and determination of our planning officers, because we're in this weird, I mean, you woke up in the middle of a video on a subcommittee, this weird, I mean, you woke up in the middle of a video on a subcommittee, and I might to wake up with a lot of, to be, 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 Joanna, to take that thanks back to all the councillors.
Ashkenas?
Can I just add, not to say, this is a wonderful report, with planning committee, always figuring out how many students we have, and how many students each college gets, we look forward to the amount of people asking us for planning permissions, for student accommodation, and we're saying for ourselves, and they try, they try to get accommodation, is it, how much more accommodation do we need? Now we have a very good idea what really, what they, what the real means are, it's a very, very useful tool for us with the planning department.
There's no further debate. Councillor Blento, you have the right to reply.
Okay, just to clarify, these are modifications to the formal local plan, they're not, it's not supplementary plan, it's a bit more weighted than that in terms of where we're, where we stand. So they will be formal modifications that we submit to the inspector, who's currently conducting his own national public, just what we believe, straight to our face, what we've done to discuss it with clearly people who may challenge our policies, allocation of other housing allocations. So that, hopefully, straight to our position, where we have to defend the local plan policy relative to that section. I'll just highlight on my own, I was a bit rushed with the time on the last contribution. If you look to page seventeen, you'll see there's a reference to a modification of the spatial strategy, and that's clearly important, what we spent on that spatial strategy policy. To ensure in regards to development of student housing, that existing housing, housing allocations aren't lost to student accommodation, and that's obviously will echo with people who know about the Brown appeal in the Bronze, but that was a shock to the system, that we had allocated a site to residential short, and to find an appeal allowed, that could go to student accommodation was a shock. So we had to respond to that, and there's a lot of matters. That then echoes into the policy forty-six, student housing policy as well. So again, that, that is, that's allocations, a part of that. And there's also a modification, which is, I think, needs to be highlighted, requiring an institution, a pos institution, university or otherwise, to be created to the road scheme for a formal agreement. And that, you see, has supported effects in this about plan, ensuring that the accommodation requires actually reflects the student requirements of those specific institutions. And that's, again, something I think many councillors are familiar with, this, this concern and in some cases, knowledge that there's been a disregard of some of the points we made previously in terms of ensuring student accommodation typically is for, and the main university in there, existing local plan, really talks to ensure that that is spent in, that's one of the modifications proposed. I'll, I'll just finish and refer to the point that councillor Ashton got exercised about in terms of the plan of the inspectorate. Well, he does have the point, so I'll just leave it to the issue of the Brown appeal in Bronze, hopefully the inspector will try to improve it in the near future, and the person who understands that, comment, I hope will accept that as an argument of value to this council.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote. Please, can I see all those in favour of recognition, it's sent out on page two. All those in favour?
That's thirty-four.
Three against. Okay, I propose now that we have a short break, ten minutes until five to eleven, brother. Comfort break. Fear of sounding like young Mr. Grace, you're all doing very well. So can we keep this up for the rest of the evening, honour, we are, what should be the home stretch now. Thank you. I've got spoken, I've got my assistance now. I love the way, it's going to be also quite a problem. Agenda item seven, recommendation of committees' adoption. Agenda item seven, a recommendation of City Affairs Committee, pay policy statement. The recommendation is sent out in the information packet, and I can't be, so we may have to. Is there any debate? And we'll go to the vote. Please come and see those in favour of recommendations on page three-two-two.
Three.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, shall combine authority. With the consent of the council, I propose to allocate up to thirty minutes on this item. The legal, the legal will, they'll open the, present the case, and then questions, questions to the leader of council can be made, up to two minutes, and the legal will have up to two minutes to respond, and there will then be opportunities for supplementary and response to two minutes each. Is everybody clear on that? Councillor Grace?
Just maybe declare an interest as a candidate in the mayoral race.
With that, I'll probably give the council to, to present the report.
So the report effectively is the report quite strategy resources, but it proposes our needs for the strategy in overview, or overview, sorry, overview of the commission, and that being councillors' big engagement. So in that context, I just wanted to just give a brief update at this time of time. So for the benefit of councillors, and I think it is important that as the evolution develops, and clearly a platform of that council capital, there's a competition for the mayoral elect, which is obviously quite a big factor, because it's going to be quite influenced by the electorate selection of mayor. As it develops, the, in the rights of councillors, and I think there's over three hundred councillors on the footprint of Cambridge, there needs to be engagement with councillors. And the government come out of a process which, by the nature of how government manages the evolution processes, wasn't highly engaged, other than the short consultation with some. So in terms of scrutiny, the purpose of having this discussion is to see if anybody wants to ask any questions, but to help that, I just wanted to give a bit of an update on, on where we're at. So in terms of the overview and scrutiny committee, we, we want, we had some choice about which councillors nominated, which people from which party, but the purpose is to have an overview scrutiny committee, which has a chosen number of fourteen, which is there to give proportionality, which, and also it would, it needs to have a chair that's not from the same party as the mayor in the end. So that committee of fourteen, I think that's two Lib Dems, two Labour, one independent, one unit, and eight Conservatives. So that, that is there to hold the combined authority and the mayor to account, it's also there as a root for councillors as well, because it's a root for issues to be raised. The root that we propose in the City Affairs Committee is that the strategy resources will be the lead, but we would also envisage there being the opportunity to have informal discussions, including at the request of either of the two members of the scrutiny committee. It isn't always going to be possible to pre-scrutinise issues, particularly to take them through certain councils, but there clearly is a hope, and it certainly, we should just have expectations of pre-scrutiny, if it be possible at times, simply with the nature of the community. But there is clearly opportunities, A, to have reports of strategy and resources, B, to take issues like the budget, like if there's a further devolution proposal, and there's discussion about a devolution to bid, which is probably going to be linked to the autumn budget statement in twenty seventeen. The government has to be tested itself about what's its view about the evolution. Under Cameron and Oswald, particularly a guy called Lord O'Neill, gave a lot of commitment to this, and not anybody in Whitehall believes this is a good idea. So I think there's, there's definitely some issues about what's the government's commitment is, and we'll be asking questions, and others will ask questions about that. We're told there is a commitment, and that there'll be commitments for further devolution. So the combined authority's been meeting, it's outlined the budget, it's been meeting as a shadow, combined authorities first, funding can now be released because it's submitted to the government assurance framework, which the government has, hasn't yet approved, with the same principle that it agrees to. And in parallel to that, there's proposals to get people involved in scrutiny together in March, so that the first real scrutiny would probably start in June, where there's also elected mayor, but the, it would mean that the scrutiny process can start. There will be a scrutiny officer appointment in terms of an advert shortly, with the expectation that there will be someone in place by May, which would be the first annual meeting of the combined authority, but I don't expect that, that will have a large amount of business. It will certainly be there to set up combined authority with the elected mayor following the May before the election. The, as I said, other things I might usefully mention. So the parliamentary order went to, it's first House Commons Committee on the Monday this week. People might think it's a little strange that elections are starting to happen and the order hasn't been approved, it's certainly interesting. It will, we're told, unless it's really challenged during these parliamentary processes, get approved by sixteenth of March. I won't go into a lot of the purposes of devolution, although I could, I just don't think that you want me to. So clearly, as the League of Council, I am there to be the voice of Cambridge, I'm also there to seek to contribute, as has been mentioned in this chamber, however the deal spills. And obviously, I would personally like there to be an all Tory mayor, it would change the balance of life within that authority, and I'm sitting, I'm sitting behind my preferred candidate, but there are others I understand in the field. And the supplementary vote system has some opportunities, and is not, not to be wholly underestimated, and I keep trying to correct websites that try and compare the outcome to how many votes were polled wall by wall across the county, because that isn't actually how this will work. So, so there is a budget. Again, my point with my colleagues, other leaders, has been, you can't actually spend a fifty million pound programme properly and do it by assessing projects, not just for their economic output, but for their social benefits, and ensuring that they're in very much sustainable, unless you've got a reasonable standing. And so we will continue to look at that without wanting to create a new bureaucracy. There's clearly overlap between the devolution, combined authority mayor, and the work that the county in Peterborough, particularly the left does. It's a shame that there's been a public spat between an MP and the left, I don't think that that's been very well timed, because this is the time when in fact the left and different people in the county should actually be working to integrate, and that's been my argument. And whilst I know that a couple of people on the other side, including councillor Clentall, think the left shouldn't have a vote, my view is that we have to get integration, A, because of cost, but B, because we've got a strategic economic plan, we've got all sorts of documents in it, and it has to actually come together. I cannot be a universal policeman in this process, but I will do my best. So, yeah, I'll just welcome any questions, if people want to ask questions, and I will do my best to answer them without notice. Thank you.
Any questions, councillor Vic?
I had three questions, really. Yes, I am one of the people who did ask councillor earlier about, about his support for the left having votes inside the combined, the combined authority. Four, because this seemed to be, to be quite an unusual step to take, although the city deal much aligned in, in the way its governance works, and was probably a lot wrong with it, but one thing that didn't happen there was that by the involvement of the university non-elected but respected by the department, by the involvement of the left non-elected in the department, we did not get a vote in the actual public decision-making process. I, I think that it's, it would be interesting to hear from councillor how he thinks that giving the left, the unelected left a vote on public decision-making really passes the democratic accountability test. The second question was about the scrutiny arrangements, the overview and scrutiny committee, and the appointment of a scrutiny officer. It would be useful to have councillor Hurst's views on the involvement of the overview and scrutiny committee in the appointment of a scrutiny officer, because I think that officer is intended to support that committee, and seems able to have a role. And the third, the simple question is, has it yet been decided where the combined authority will be based? Because clearly it has to have a physical form somewhere where people have desks and assistants, and people have to go to where there's something to do.
Well, in terms of the vote for the left, it's one vote out of eight. It's not my position, but in a way, it, it helps if there is, and this obviously would help if, if the electorate made a choice of a mayor, that added to the diversity of the group, that there isn't a kind of block that's in complete control. So I think, I think in terms of this pragmatic view, which doesn't actually pass any tests of democratic accountability, I think having the left having a vote is a different voice. So it's not a wholly change of voice, because at the moment we're all blokes, but it adds a different view to the discussion. If, if that individual had a significant influence on the spending choices, then I would obviously have a stronger view on the issue. I'd just come back to the position that the left has twenty-four staff and it's based at Alconry, that's not a very sustainable accessible location, but it's a, and I haven't fully got into all of the arguments about between the different parties, but I think those will come out in the fact that the left is far rapidly improving its requirements for reporting interests. I just, I haven't got any taste of view about it, I just want to see the left integrated. It's got a twenty-four staff operation, it's got a significant turnover, and I would prefer, going on to the third question of location, that the, that the combined authority and the left co-located personally, and that's one of the cases I'll be putting, but the vote for the left is an opponent decision and it can be reviewed. Overview and scrutiny committee role, it's really, I mean, the overview and scrutiny committee will have a dedicated officer, they will have prime say, it will have similarities, and councillor Bayton knows how the police and crime panel works, it's got an employee. We, without wanting to limit its challenge, I do want, I would hope that that committee would see a role of partnership working and influencing as well as challenge. So I just think that, that, that committee that's working well, and particularly since it's got a valuable dedicated resource and a freedom of operation, it could have quite a more fluid and more challenging contribution than the governments, for instance, of the city deal shapes. But I think even though, I want to be part of discussions to approve the way that both the assembly and the board work, and thereby the assembly has some greater inputs on some of the choices that are made in the city deal. So it's not perfect, so I was shortening your bell, and, but I'm, and I'm happy to have a longer... But I'm happy to have a longer discussion about this.
Do you have a supplementary? Good. Any other questions? Even better. Then we could move to the vote on the recommendations, which are on page 337. The recommendations are to agree to the appointments of councillor Bayton and councillor Big to the overview and scrutiny committee with the combined authority. All those in favour, please show. Lovely, thank you. We now move to oral questions. This item will last a maximum of 30 minutes. The executive councillor chair and nominee will have two minutes to reply. The questioner will have two minutes to put the supplementary question or to seek clarification on the response to the original question. The executive councillor chair or nominee will have further two minutes to reply to supplementary questions. At the conclusion of the 30 minutes, those that have not answered, questions that have not been answered, may provide a written response to the member who has put the question. Councillor Big, her first question.
Thank you, councillor Big. When you see the rapid sort of developments going on on the north-west Cambridge site, it is a disappointment not to see activity across the road at Derby Green. Many of the joint committee have dealt with a lot of the outlying, a lot of the reserve matters at the end in respect to Derby Green. We haven't yet seen any activity. Clearly, there is a big difference between the two sites. One is within landholding of one owner, a university. On the other side of the road, Derby Green is in multiple landownerships. We can't really know all the sort of views of different owners, what their positions are, other than that they did a consortium, appointed Barracks as the promotion agency and the promotion development taken on board at Derby Green. That was being agreed in the public knowledge. Barracks did, as a result of the referendum, sort of pause in terms of what they were going to continue to develop within the eastern region. Clearly, they've been building out the top of the meadows and continue to do that. I believe that they will fully complete that. Much recent indication for Derby Green is that Barracks will be delivering the two residential phases that had been given full approval and continue to be the overarching developer and charter of that site.
Do you have a supplementary?
Please, councillor Big, over the recent stalling there. It looks like it's over and there might be a move forward. But I wonder whether, given the sort of the slow history of this from the beginning, now over 10 years out of the local plan that named it, whether he would be willing to consider the use of compulsory purchase power to end the fragmented ownership and the unusual promotion arrangement that is in place to deliver the developments? If progress doesn't sustain itself after the decision recently to go again? It seems to me that the generally lackluster government, like Acre on Howden, one of the things that could be potentially useful is the intention on the part of the government to strengthen local authorities' compulsory purchase powers to enable developments that are approved to happen and get delivered more quickly. And I wonder whether this is one such case. There are so many homes involved. It was a case where we got 40% affordable housing. It seems tragic that we're still sitting here on this very unsatisfactory basis of multiple landowners and a separate development. I wonder what councillor Big would view on that.
I mean, as you've asked it, then clearly it should be considered. But that's in an area where the Joint Control Committee are overseeing its progress thus far. So for us as a city council not to consider these issues, other than in sort of partnership with South Camryshire and the other, what's it? Landowners have evolved. Would be sort of, would be wrong. But clearly, we'll see if the indication is proved incorrect. Then obviously, we need to consider how that can be brought forward. And yeah, if the government give local parties talks to sort of, or powerful talks to get that going, then it needs to be considered, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Byrne to the executive councillor for streets and open spaces. Question two.
Mr. Mayor, can I just check, councillor Byrne's appear. I'm very happy to give a question today. Obviously, you're making a follow-up.
I can make a ruling on that if you so wish. I understand councillor Byrne has left early because at last our operation on our shoulders is being done tomorrow morning. I'm going to allow you to ask a question.
Well, I hope this will be of interest to others in Peru in that case. So the draft aim for policy was approved unanimously by the Community Services Committee in January. It follows extensive research and consultation, including an accessory discussion with key stakeholders and discussion with other local authorities to see what might work best for Cambridge. The proposals include the following. We'll be limiting, we're suggesting limiting any doors of similar advertising signs to a maximum of one business, ensuring signs are placed against the buildings and not causing destructions. And at least 1.5 metres of un-instructed and possibly to use footway is left clear. And other things such as developing a more standard approach for size, shape and design of advertising signage. We aim to start consulting very soon on this and we're very keen to engage fully with many people and businesses as possible. We've tried to design a policy which makes the street easier for everyone, but especially those with reduced mobility. And with a due sense of irony, I point out that people in wheelchairs, pushy buggies and or crutches find it particularly hard to get around. I want to pay tribute to the officers, especially the young who were working so hard on this project. And it's very exciting that after talking about this for so long, we are finally coming close to consulting on this.
Thank you. As everyone knows, supplementary. Question three, councillor Abbott to the executive councillor of communities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council, just get my, okay. The council recognises that severe pressures based on other NHS organisations that socially catered by this type of track that squeeze on their finances by this tool of government and the unprecedented demands of a rising population. We constantly hear about overcrowding in our local AME services and our protracted rates are strongly under the tip of the iceberg. The STP is an attempt by local commissioners to try and reconcile their annual deficits and to create a system that they say will be sustainable in the future. One can also assume that there is also recognition that the current system is unsustainable. The STP proposes to work closer with partners to prevent rather deteriorating services and aspires to improve health outcomes for all our residents. Whilst the diagnosis handed down by the NHS is the correct one, the treatment prescribed is the wrong one. By this, I mean that the targets they can't believe they found out nationally of the health system will inevitably lead to worse outcomes for local people, especially at a time when adult social care services are being restricted and a large number of people are living with un-medicare needs. My concern is that, or my concern is all more aptly considered that Cambridge is a place where there are exceptionally large inequalities in health outcomes. For instance, people live up to eight years longer in some areas and others. The council does, however, wish to continue working in partnership with local health and social care providers, as well as statutory and voluntary organisations. So whilst we certainly do not support council services, I'd like to come about through the implementation of the STP. We do want to build closer working with local NHS and voluntary organisations, depending on council arrangements, by recommending positive contribution.
Does anyone have a supplementary?
Would the executive councillor agree with our concerns about chestnut oil's erosion as evidence for what STP bring in practice?
As mentioned in the question earlier, yes, I am concerned about what is happening in Chester and I do not agree with what is being proposed. I think this is an example of what could happen across the city, not just in neighbourhood in respect of primary care and AME services, but in respect of other health and social care services too, if the STP was to implement. So I, so I would view what councillor Big says.
Question four. Councillor Smart to the leader.
All right. Thank you, councillor Smart. So there's been an announcement by Sergeant Javie that he wants to pass primary legislation to limit the freedoms of councils in terms of ethical procurement. And how it's been phrased is that it would be used to stop councils, say, refusing to buy apples from one country or pears from another. And in my judgement, and I've been involved in our government for a long period of time, I think this crosses the line. And not because I've got a sudden passion for picking on different countries around the world, or my colleagues have, but it is actually an issue about, well, who's got the judgment? And if you go back to the campaigns, which I think that this authority, before any of us were here, did an exceptionally good job of contributing to challenging apartheid. Not that we were any bigger than any other place on the planet, but we played our part. That's an example of the kind of business that I fear. The only thing that tends to happen with civil servants and rules is they don't get the balance right. So when they pass a new set of rules, it goes actually a lot further and gets a lot more complicated. I remember a number of rules where in fact Whitehall was saying, for instance, to the Greater London Council, whether or not it could buy the right type of bed being built. So I just think essentially it's a bad piece of legislation and there is a consultation to the end of March. And I am keen to share with other members the response from the council to seek unanimous support.
Councillor Smart, do you have a supplementary?
No.
Thank you. Question five, councillor Byrne to the executive councillor for streets and open spaces.
Thank you. I won't turn around because then I will concede you the question. So we have a final count of 89,250 visitors to the icebox infection over, ooh, I forgot to start my clock, over the previous year. That's up from 82,000 in the previous cycle. This included more than 30,000 people ice skating, over 40,000 to get sold fairground rides and more than 8,000 to get sold for the big wheel attraction. Over 1,000 responses were received by iceboxes to their satisfaction survey, which 88% of people said they would recommend it on friend. Market research suggests that the main issue of concern from attendees was the quality of food offered and the providers are working on that for next year. We worked with providers in advance to respond to some of the concerns raised in the previous year with viewing windows, trees and wood planting on the outside of the site to prove the appearance, a smaller footprint of the site and greater restrictions on the noise. I myself visited the site, actually at my own expense, and enjoyed with former mayor councillor Byrne and other councillors. Arrived at the ferries, we were seeing spectacular views over Cambridge. And although I wasn't brave enough to skate, I saw for myself hundreds of residents and visitors having a really great time. And many residents have also commented to me how visually attractive the ferries were at war, especially when it happened at night. And I think that was particularly welcome addition.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, councillor Smith. Could you tell us what measures are put in place to protect the grass and to respond to the concerns around that last year's event?
Thank you. So I've already mentioned some of the visibility things. I won't repeat those. So the first thing we did was have a meeting of several senior officers and senior councillors to the site before it was set up to talk with the people running the event and discuss our concerns and red lines prior to the site's opening. We set up a large number of kind of red lines at our point of before that with the operators. Regular updates to all councillors and officers were given before, during and after the setup because I was a copied into those. The grass was treated before setup and key areas were treated, covered with matten. There were greater restrictions of vehicle movement on site even at setup and take down. And there were frequent visitors by the lead officer, especially at setup and take down. The grass restoration works, which had been taking place since, have been paid for entirely by the operators and not by the council because we believe in holding the operators to account for that. Gets a bit technical, but these remedial works include decompatching and opening of the grass roots by full erasure of the site. This was followed by reseeding of the area to allow regrowth as soon as warmer conditions prevailed. And now those warmer conditions are coming in. A further over-sow will be carried out to ensure good grass coverage is already established. It's sadly not possible immediately to have grass in perfect condition whilst it's been covered in winter for over six weeks. But officers are confident grass coverage will be back to normal levels during the early spring, enabling the public to enjoy the open space at its full potential during the peak periods of the year.
Thank you. Question six, councillor Wackke to the executive councillor of Howden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Since its launch just three months ago, Cambridge Street, Cambridge, raised over £6,000 via just giving text donations and other means. There has already been two applications into the fund. We're currently devising further literature aimed at raising awareness of the fund to those begging or rough sleeping and will be adding details of street faith to the outreach cards that are given out to those on the street, informing them about what help is available. Hosters have also been circulated to all the hostels and support agencies aimed at service users. Colleagues within support services have given the details of the fund and are also aware of its availability in order to share with their clients. We have produced a communication strategy which will detail how we intend to promote the scheme across different thematic areas, the night-time economy, students, mill road retailers, Grafton Centre area, Hills Road retail area, et cetera. And the aim is to ensure that the Cambridge Street, Aintree brand is recognised across the city and seen as the best way to help those on the streets.
Councillor Wackke, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you.
You? Councillor, I think councillor seven to the executive councillor for streets and open spaces.
That gives you a question. I too am delighted to see new shelters in Cambridge shelters, which also include, as I showed you, where Barton Road, Castleville, Milton Road, Colton's Lay, Low Road, Robsey, Beaufort Road and Tullisham Drift. As a point of clarification, and I did double check to separate officers just to be absolutely sure I was right, these projects are not actually EIP projects. They constitute a separate public plan, I took the reference being PB 018390070. This has been a rolling programme spread out across the city's four areas over a number of years and split into a variety of delivery phases with local area revitalisation committees during the 2013 to 14th cycle. So I think the key thing to emphasise here is this bus stop programme was always designed as a rolling programme and there was never an expectation that all the projects would take place in that first year.
Secondary, I wouldn't be expecting to ask a supplementary, but given that answer, could she tell me what the current delay on EIP projects is?
Okay, so in terms of EIP, there are a number of particularly complex projects which are granted EIP agreement 2014/04. There is no, by the way, the answer is there is no average delay in an EIP project depends on the complexity of the particular project. So these are the projects which are taking some time to carry out. Most of these involve work with various party constraints such as land ownership and almost all of them also require sign off from the county highways department, which is explaining that slightly longer lead time. What I do want to do is to pay tribute to the work done by councillor Ryan, my predecessor in this, because in 2015, she oversaw a number of changes which made the process for EIP bids much simpler. This means that projects are now chosen under much stricter criteria and that means they need delivered more quickly. So what I can say is that So what I can say is that all the 2016-17 projects are either under development, delivery or have already been completed.
Thank you. Question eight is councillor O'Ryan, is a big Council for Housing. How are you ruling the question?
Sorry? I vote for Arty on behalf of councillor O'Ryan.
I'm not sure that's in the constitution, actually. Can you show me where it is?
No.
Thank you. I'll take the question, councillor O'Ryan has ordered the mark for councillor, councillor Burton earlier, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I happen to know that councillor O'Ryan had a supplementary, but I'm sure, I'll leave that to you. Begging is illegal and those court begging can be dealt with by the police. However, the maximum penalty is a fine and individuals will often continue to beg. Therefore, a safer communities team and housing advice team work closely with the street outreach team and police to ensure that we are able to identify persistent beggars and in particular those that are aggressive or cause nuisance. Anyone who is begging because they are genuinely homeless and need support is referred to agencies that can assist them. We have also produced information cards for individuals on the street which details where they can access services such as advice, support, accommodation or food. Where individuals are known to be persistent beggars or have a problematic street presence and are refusing to engage with these services, they are referred to the fortnightly multi-agency Street Life Working Group, SWG. The SWG discusses support and enforcement options in complex or entrenched cases and develops individual plans to support the person. Additionally, the council have funded a new chronically excluded adult support worker specifically to work with most entrenched individuals and to report back to the SWG on progress. Housing advice has been successfully obtained in substantial government funding to employ a dual diagnosis team who will work with the street outreach team to deliver treatment directly to the street life community and this team is expected to be in place by April 2017. The City Council has also funded an additional public realm enforcement officer post whose remit will be to go out and speak to beggars, be verbal warnings directed to the support centres and pass on any relevant information to the later ASB team when enforcement is required.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Arty. Who knows, someone maybe who's councillor O'Ryan, thank you. Question nine, councillor Tim Moore to the Leader. I almost made you move that, actually.
I'm not being subbed by someone from a board that may be the Executive Council for Streets and Open Spaces.
Yes, this is a cross-the-folio issue, so I'm afraid you've drawn the chalks, but I've got me. So I do forgive me if I'm not able to answer all points in very great depth, but I'm doing my very best to answer across the page. The short answer is that we work hard to ensure that we act fairly and that although IMD is used as an indicator, it's only used in a package of indicators as part of, as a basket, not as the key indicator for where we allocate. So I've been running horribly out of time here, but discretionary resources are based on the need for the services. A lot of these services are universal or targeted on specific needs, such as we have 65+ service, which work for those people wherever they live. Our housing environment service resources, with that we do not use IMD data in the allocation. We do not actually determine value allocations on a global basis, it's about allocating through need. In terms of the anti-poverty strategy, this is where we do use a range of available evidence to identify geographical concentrations of poverty within the city. This includes the IMD but also a lot of other data, such as housing, the claimant data, council tax, the claimant data, child poverty data, groups of people who are more likely to experience poverty, including older people, people with disabilities, women and some BAME communities. In terms of the sharing prosperity fund, some of those projects go across the city and some of them again are focused on areas of need in a way which is more similar to the one use of the anti-poverty strategy. I hope that helps, then.
Do you have a supplementary?
I do. Thank you. That is, I think, an improvement on what I had before. IMD, of course, is not a useful indicator of real need. It helps focus on where that happens but not on the absolute size of poverty. Poverty is, in order to cause its prevalence, in all of our wards, with all of certain factors. But then the index of multiple declaration, each contributory index is based on a rate, a count divided by population, the use which enables a number with that issue to be calculated by LSOA. It is this rate which is ordered by numerical value we put in a blank, the ratio, the relative position, and it can't be used as an ordinal number, as an ordinary number. So families who fall into each category tend to fall into separate categories and multiply to crime. Such families are known to risk pain in each ward. The IMD includes a limited set of indicators, and particularly we're using some of the elderly mentally ill and some of the other indicators. So I'm strongly in favour of an anti-poverty strategy, but one that's based on low standards about how to combat the impact of poverty, especially on children, and the concept of impact on their life chances. We've all seen these five families resulting in poor self-worth and educational aspiration, which are implicated in the next generation. This is the cause of much of the inequality we see in our wards and very least here that we're using a wider variety of measures to allocate fair resources to each.
Thank you. Yes, you're correct. The idea is, is an indicator only just why it is used in the way we're using it, we're not using it as a kind of, this is the only thing we're using to get an indicator of, sorry, I'm not being sensitive now, for our logic or which ones we go to, if that makes any sense. I think the key is that we respond to need in the city wherever it is. So if you look at the anti-poverty strategy, this is to support reference on local councils around the city. And I just want to spend some time to pay tribute to the work of councillor, oh, God. What time is it? To the work of councillor Johnson in what he's doing with the anti-poverty strategy and the sharing prosperity fund, there's so much work is going on and it really is designed right across the city to target the needs. So yes, we're not, we're not enthusing broad instruments, it's about trying to do this as sensibly as we can.
Thank you. Question 10, councillor Todd Jones.
Yes. Is councillor Todd, that question 10, yes. Gosh, I also didn't expect this to get this. Yeah, I actually, I'm sure you can do this. Residents can get involved in a number of ways. First of all, a non-online survey that's on our website, a hard copy survey that's available to those who have access to the internet from our centres, made by contacting the council offices. There's going to be eight drop-in sessions, four for the next area committees and four at our community centres, which will be in times of 7th March to the 24th of April. Anyone can attend these, they don't have to live in the typical ward where the community centre is situated. And if anyone really has burning crush on a young or specific dead people after two, it comes down to the office's leading the work, Jackie Hattie and Alison Condor by email in community dot review at cambridge dot com dot uk or ringing, Cambridge 457862.
Oh, it's a little close, basically, a bit of a play. Todd, probably, probably.
Is there a supplementary?
No, thank you, councillor Thompson. Just to mention, yes, first I've got the sessions, North Area Committee, 2nd of March, you'll be welcome.
Was that supplementary?
I'm just hoping the constitution process is working, I can't, thank you very much. Commissioner Todd Jones for, for the Atrium.
Question 11, councillor Kentrell to the Executive Council for Environment, Service and City Centre.
So close, so close. I've got stopwatch in it, anyway. I mean, I don't think this is all serious, councillor O'Ryan is very valid and serious point. Yes, I feel that we have within our role as much as we physically can. We have put in place measures to deliver the change and minimise the impact on residents. We've worked on two main areas, making sure residents know what is happening and working with our staff delivering the services, to deliver the service, ensure that they feel supported and resources are placed during the change period. In terms of informing residents, we have had a wide and thorough campaign in the city that started with all member briefing back in November and also interviewed artists in the local press over the last few weeks and before and in Cambridge and so forth. Also on our website, social media, there's a whole range of other bits and pieces on there, posters various locations around the city and also individual letters crucially to each household affected in the city, as well as posters of our citizens. Similarly, promotional work has been carried out in South Cambridge too. We believe that all residents have been informed to the best of our ability, but obviously we value the role of local houses in their wards, certainly with a face-to-face contact with the groups and to use a very good message in the coming week. Our crews have been consulted in new routes and given time to learn them. We've put together crews who know the cross-border areas, so they've worked together from both councils. But for the crews, for the first few weeks in which the city, that's our, in which each day is their first, for the particular round, we will obviously face some challenges. So to support them, we've put on extra crews and vehicles and to deal with the areas where crews encounter difficulties or struggle to complete the rounds in time and to deal with the potential increase in missing seats. Ahead of the new bin days, we've carried out extra, additional collections of flats and bin stores across the city and to make sure that they don't have a longer visual gap between the collections. There's more, but I'm not sure.
Question one.
I'd like to thank the Executive Council for their response. Can I ask what thought was given to the timing of the implementation of the revised brand, particularly since we're coming up to a holiday, public holiday period? We all know that this next two or three months, there are a number of public holidays and could the Executive Council explain one of the arrangements in relation to those public holidays? So for example, historically, bin collection days have actually moved and are the public aware of that and how we're going to communicate that, because that has been caused some confusion. And I acknowledge that the council has done a lot to actually notify people, certainly many have received a letter, but even those, the letters have gone through letterboxes, residents are still asking what's happening and when and how.
I think that is a very fair supplementary question and also one which highlights the timing issue. Now, it's really important to bear in mind that obviously, if you think about the year throughout the course of the twelve months, during the Christmas period, the run to Christmas, we see an upswing in the amount of residual waste that blacked things because of Christmas and increased packaging and so on. What, there's a biting point in the spring when both green waste, when green waste starts to slowly creep up rather than have the heavy loads that we have in the summer and the autumn especially. It's the point in the year where we have what we think the best, or window opportunity where we're collecting the least potential waste, therefore reducing the pressure on the groups that learn the new round. Now, whenever the city or any city expands, as Cambridge has done, in the same way that we imagine our own waters which have grown with new residents and so forth, it's a similar sort of pattern when it comes to bin rounds. Bin rounds don't organically change, you change them in a wholesale manner. Previous administration, this was done and there was a similar sort of period and related concerns and issues that had to be addressed during that point. Now, equally to that, it's a question of judgement. At certain points in the year, we have a certain number of holidays and so forth. We think that we should be in a position where we're spending fully within a month. It just so happens that we've picked the period in which we thought that it would be easiest to bed at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. That concludes all questions for this evening. We now move to item 10, motions of council. I thought we'd remind everybody that the laws change slightly in the court for motions. The moveback on the second, I have up to 10 minutes between them. Any proposal for a second amendment also have up to 10 minutes between them. All other contributions are up to three minutes per council. When an amendment is voted on and lost, I then call to a vote on the original motion with no further debate. We debate the motion and the amendment all as mine. We now have the terms to the motion entitled Ensuring Non-UK EU Citizens to Remain in Cambridge, Agenda Item 10A, to be considered by the council, which is pretty far ahead of the agenda. I call in councillor Smart to move the back motion. Commissioner Smart.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this entitled Ensuring Non-UK EU Residents to Stay in Cambridge doesn't, of course, come over all EU residents. So I presume I would not need to construct a clever rhetorical argument against most, if not all of you, to vote for this motion. And that's not to say that I take it for granted. However, the matter this motion concerns to direct consequence for 9,000 of our residents. In a small city the size of Cambridge, it is no small amount. There are 9,000 non-UK EU nationals living in Cambridge. These people have the right to vote in city and county elections, so they can have voted for us representing them. They are our residents. However, such EU nationals cannot vote for their elections, nor by the way, could they vote in the referendum, vote for the EU. Therefore, this motion is one of the few ways that a predicament may be addressed by a democratic pillar of the body. The problem as it stands is that non-UK EU residents cannot now be guaranteed the right to continue to live in Cambridge or indeed in any part of the UK. In simple terms, the offer on the table is if you are a non-UK EU national, you will have to leave and go alone. But where is home? Some of these people have lived here decades, this is their home. The EU nationals living in Cambridge are someone here, made a home here, are wives, cousins, partners, have children, attend local schools and are friends and neighbours. But even if this motion concerns a particular group of people, it can never be just about them. Or them and us, if you like. We are surely one people in our multiple recipients in the city who are proud of our diversity of the population, because that diversity is part of what we are and what we want to be. If we give up our desire to live with this group of people called non-UK EU nationals or any other group for that matter, surely we cannot provide for ourselves. It couldn't be argued that the common sense approach to this matter is that surely the most likely outcome would be that the government would entirely eventually allow non-UK EU nationals to stay here. That is the indecent and sensible outcome, isn't it? However, that's not good enough. People can't live their lives on the basis of chance and that's very likely. Our government is blaming people's lives and with our residents' lives. As has been said before, our residents are seemingly like marketing chips that the government should be used to negotiate with and their convenience with the EU. The reason I've come to put this motion starts about the son of people I know in my day-to-day life. I'd like to briefly share with you what I've come across. It seems appropriate to name, it's a name, inappropriate to name it, so I'll call them A, B and C. A has lived in Cambridge about 10 years and suffered here. She has full-time permanent employment, saving up for the small house here. However, against the odds, she finds herself in the worst of our UK government. Like many non-UK EU nationals living here, she never expected to find herself in this situation. Without UK citizenship, she has no, she now has no guarantee of residency here in the future. I further understand from her situation that should someone in her opposition wish to acquire residency or citizenship, that the process is now not fit for purpose, if indeed ever was. The website has incorrect information on it. There is the need to complete a 58-page form, which other countries seem to manage with a non-UK family. The process is complex, complicated and convoluted in an unnecessary way. There are various costs that must be incurred for various aspects of any requirement applied for it, but for this person, I understand it will be about £2,000. Even after all that is done, nothing is served and so she cannot make any plans in her future life here at present. B is in a similar position to A as a locally employed member of the community. Her social economic position is different to A and she is not a graduate, she is poor. She has been in the UK living a normal life and so on that now. As her income is much less, my worry for her is that the cost involved, the £2,000 would be unaffordable and she would end up being forced to leave. C is the son of Jewish parents who came here at the time of the Second World War. In this case, my concerns are not just about the process and the cost that might, or might not apply to their family situation, I haven't asked, but rather with matters of the horrocks. Didn't he really fight for a war to save Europe from fascism, so then come to this? With him and indeed all of these, I have never felt the need to ask about where they come from or what they did, but rather I took them as a family. What I know, I know not because I interrogated them about the background, but rather because of talking about it. What I know, I know not because I interrogate them about the background, but rather because of talking about them. This motion talks about writing to our Prime Minister and our two MPs. These latter two are in rather different positions with regard to this matter. Daniel Zidane, voted for the amendment to guarantee the rights of EU nationals currently living here. In the three significant votes on the subject, he voted in favour of giving EU nationals currently living in the UK the right to remain, voted in favour of the EU nationals living in the UK to retain rights, including the rights to live and work in the UK and voted to seek to protect the residents' rights of citizens of the European Union and their family members who were lawfully resident in the United Kingdom while they suffered the referendum. He has also signed a three million page to that effect. He has said that people who are making such a huge contribution to our society deserve much better than to be talked about by the government as, as I say, bargaining chips. I will in fact go further and say that no human being should be talked about as a bargaining chip. To throw any cast over the right for the EU nationals to remain here in the future, and I certainly undermine family life, but the stability of our public services, our economy and our society, both here in Cambridge and in the country. For fairness and transparency, I'd also like to mention our other Cambridge member of parliament. In the three significant votes on the subject, neither of them voted against the EU nationals living in the UK to retain rights, including the rights to live and work in the UK, and the other two times she chose to accept herself in the vote. I hope you can join me in my support of the nine thousand non-UK EU Cambridge citizens to obtain prevalent residence rights here and put all possible pressure on government to give these residents liberty for their future lives here in Cambridge.
Mr Mayor, councillor Larkin is the second up. You have about three minutes. Do you want to speak now or?
Thank you, councillor Smart for bringing that. I haven't spoken once, but when this first came up and given the time, if council will trust that these two pages were the most relevant thing I ever put together for the council, I'll sit down and let the debate continue.
Is there any debate, councillor Vivas? That's right.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, councillor Smart has spoken about it. Nine thousand EU citizens who are born in an EU country, not the UK, who live here in the UK, Cambridge. It's nine thousand plus one, that is, because you're the only one who was born in an EU country, or born in Cyprus. And I came here forty years ago and I do share exactly the sentiment that you expressed earlier on. And every Sunday when I go to church, I get a lot of Greek people who come to me asking me to sign their photographs to apply for citizenship. They've been here such a long time, they never even thought about applying for British citizenship. It is a traumatic experience, a multi-page document, because about two thousand pounds and it's a horrible, horrible situation. If we can, one of the persons, I would say, is a medical doctor in charge of the immunology department here in the hospital. And you know, what happens to her and what happens to the kind of knowledge we have here in the UK? And we enjoy all the skills that she brought in this country. So I hope you do it and I fully support you and let's hope we can support the right to us and one person's role in Cambridge and the property view. Thank you.
Councillor Aydie?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Smart, we certainly commend you for this motion. It's the right thing to be saying, it's the right thing to be doing. It's a bit like shutting the gate after the horse has bolted though. Some of us on this side can be furiously first and we may not be in this place. So it seems a bit disingenuous to be getting a motion coming out which is going backwards. You shoot me at this. The motion has our support.
Thank you. Now I call councillor Benson. I don't usually speak, but I'll make a point on this one. Ready? For thirty years, some of you and I were married in the Italian community in Cambridge. My father-in-law came over here in the prison of war, in the Second World War, came back into this country in nineteen forty-six, when the Italians of Bibbey Patravee came back from South Wales. All his wife over here in fifty-one and had lived all of his life, all of his working life in this country and in the National Health Service and he paid his work, he paid his tax and he paid his stamp and they did their work. And he brought all of his cousins and his brothers and the family over and of the Cambridge Italian community, there were two main groups. There was the Marino group from the Bartholomons block, Genoa Marino, and the Masculuses from Dorset, Masculus, all those all over. And I still see those, these old men and women, and they still get in touch with me, they get in touch with me all the time because they're worried to death. They never took on British citizenship because they didn't need to. Because when you were in the European Union, ninety seventy-three, and it was free market and it was free movement, didn't need to. And the world is changing for them in their seventies, eighties and nineties. And they're not bargaining chips, they're people and they should be treated as bargaining chips. I don't usually speak with councillors these days while I'm sitting up here, but I felt that you could say that, thank you. Is there any further debate?
Sorry, I wasn't going to speak, but I couldn't resist because I find it very offensive for you to suggest that we can't bring him to his motion, it can't be brought because he's too late for the most of the parties. It is too late, but not because anybody on this side didn't campaign hard enough.
Just keep partying, just keep partying.
I think you're fine.
Your party's fine.
Was that really there? I think you're fine, that the majority of Labour voters, is it sixty-seven percent, seventy-three percent voted remain. And I for one campaigned very hard. Thank you.
Councillor?
I had to stop in a minute. Couple of things. I can honestly say, apart from maybe the councillor's fan trouble, no one in this group campaigned hard myself, I'm a Conservative. I've been six weeks, including weekends, every single day at my job and my personal life, and every time keeps in and other things. Now, I say that some of your nationality are not really affected by it. I need you all to bear in mind that in the same way you can level this at us, you as a party were in favour of our referendum, you really did. And so we ended up with a friend of mine who was also as much as it now falls. Your party, the Labour Party, votes were actually stood right down the middle. You were a few votes on a different way, you've been able to believe you actually was completely silent against it, you were in the norm of that. So we all agree with you. There's no need for it to be like this. It's Cambridge, I think there's, oh, this is the paper that separates us as individuals and you as individuals on this. That's just the bar.
Councillor Price?
Yes, thank you. Sadly, I wasn't going to join in this one either. But I'm afraid councillor Biggs sparked me with congratulations, well done. The suggestion that maybe, maybe I, I think what councillor Biggs referring to is I abstained on a motion in council. Having listened to a very powerful leave speech by one of my colleagues here, it threw some doubt in my mind for that evening, so I abstained on that particular motion within this chamber. However, had this councillor Biggs been out and about on referendum day, he might probably know because he knew I had been in King's Engines and he probably doesn't know where that is. But he would have seen me sitting outside the polling stations with remain stickers on, you know, and I voted remain. I had a slight wall in this chamber at one stage, so you can stop banging around that I was not remain.
Councillor Trump?
Just thought you'd just say that I'm called next. Can I just say that we should just stop this meeting, right? We should just stop it because however people voted, however people voted, regardless of however people voted on the twenty-third of June, actually, the issue that we are addressing this evening is very, very important. It's how we address these issues over the course of the next six months, year, three years. And you know, I think the councillor opposite who brought the motion, quite rightly said, there's a key component of our community who feel very, very vulnerable because of this. There's a lot of uncertainty, there's complexity in relation to what the government's position is. And actually, we should be a strong, clear, unified voice with national government which says they need to fix this and they need to take away that uncertainty for a key component of this community. And this is just, it's a very simple petition to tell. And I think we should all vote in favour of this motion and move on to the next edition.
I'm reluctant to vote then.
Any further debate? Councillor Herbert, do you have a right to file that this legal council?
No, I just think we, you know, we have nine thousand citizens and I, whatever people thought about the recent parliamentary votes, I just thought that that particular vote was very clear. I just was astonished personally that the Conservatives didn't actually vote for it because I think that it would be so easy to take the rights of these important members of our community out of the bargaining chairs and the payback would be the rights of the near UK citizens in many European countries.
I'm astonished, I'm not, I'm no diplomat, but neither are they.
Councillor Smart, you also have a lot of room down. Can we move to vote then? All in favour of the motion for this show?
Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you.
So we move to agenda item ten B, the motion on the breaking cheese, about councillor Aydie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to speak in support of the amended motion. I'm pleased that the Labour amendment buildings on the words. My only concern with the amendment is you seem to squirm away from civic perception and was to understand why. If it's perhaps an issue of the funness of the day, I'm sure members, including myself, would be quite happy to contribute to you. And here's a good Scots twenty-pound vote for each.
One of the fifty for a minute.
There is a hundred one, but so the motion has amazing enough support, thank you.
Is there a second up? Councillor? And you have about nine and a half minutes now.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I'm all ears. Useful, useful. Well, George May has talked in the past about creating a hostile environment for refugees and my God, we're again on the UK around the world and there is this link between the two motions. People who seem to think that the UK is a Christian country and should stay that way, well, not seeming to be a mirror of the parallel of good Samaritan and the pointless civil humanity recognizing people in need must be, must be helped. We must recognize the moral, spiritual, ethical for our own good while we must recognize our duty to help people. The vast numbers of refugees around the world among the pitiful number of the UKers we're recognizing, I'm very pleased to see this motion to Cambridge continue to save refugees and help them and try and do more to help them.
Now, councillor Smart's going to move to the amendment which is sent out in your information packs. Councillor Smart?
So the Syrian refugee crisis is the worst humanitarian crisis of our time. The challenge that it faces enormous and we are taught to step fast and resolve. We know that we're a couple of volunteers who serve high rates of gratitude. However, we also know that people who do this work do it not for the thanks they might receive, but rather because they wish to help refugees in such dire need. We also know that the work that we've already done with refugees themselves, they themselves do not wish to be publicly called attention to or in any way identified in the community. Rather, they wish to be left alone to try and get on with their daily lives. That's tempting to come to terrible grief and total loss of the situation, whilst at the same time, day by day, working to build a new life in our supportive community here in Cambridge. With regards to the idea of an event, we intend that it will not only act as a vehicle to celebrate all the good work that has gone on thus far, but also act as an example to other individuals and organizations from both the nonprofit sector and for the business community in the world. Hence, this event can usefully multiply the collective effort of our community here in Cambridge. Speaking in March twenty sixteen, the UN High Commissioner for Refugees, Filippo Randi, said this. Syria is the biggest humanitarian refugee crisis of our time. A continuing crisis of suffering for millions which should be garnering a grand swell of support around the world. He added that only a political settlement would end the suffering, that more countries had to take a greater share of refugees in the meantime. We must be more. The British government is clearly not anywhere near enough to help Syrian refugees and indeed is doing less. Most recently, the government has chosen to cut the number of unaccompanied Syrian refugee children who come to the UK to only three hundred and fifty. This is thousands less than the figure given in twenty sixteen. The announcement was made by Immigration Minister Robert O'Toole hours before triggering of the important withdrawal from the European Union of fifty bills in a bid to cynically bury the news. Whilst talking about the UK capacity until the end of our financial year. The government has clearly never been willing to bug this program of assistance such that the UK might be more equal part of other countries offering help. Many have spoken out about what can happen to an unaccompanied child and it is indeed almost certainly the most awful living place of torment before probable death. Ironically, because of the cuts the government have recently made, the children in Greece are being taught by England and the language, but instead of coming here, they face a different fate. Many, many people spoke out on this. Rabbi Josh Nebby of the Assembly of the Four Rabbis UK said, "The government's reversal of the DUCs amendment is a betrayal of refugees and British values. When Jews see refugees on the continent, we see ourselves." I hope that government councils and civil society will find a way to rescue child refugees who have suffered at home and are now suffering once more. Theresa May's symbol Tory government has been apartheid in this respect. The evidence for this is plain to see. There was a term to fight the DUCs amendments. Then government MPs voting against the conscience to vote against the DUCs. Even our favourite Tory MP, Heidi, writing so passionately in the Royal Chiefs about child refugees, showed persuasive energies of her smiling and playing with refugee children for visits to live Austin Callay. She did not vote to support the DUCs, she had stayed in the vote. This council writes to the Prime Minister to demand that the British government must be more attentive to Syrian refugees. However, looking forward, there is always more we can do. We in Cambridge are a vibrant business company. Looking to Canada, our levers are the power of the business community with refugees. This council could consider tasking our officers with producing a report for the League to explore the possibility of seeking further funding and support from the local business organizations such that the support we are able to provide to Syrian refugees may be increased further. Are you there, Michael?
Do you have a second up? And if you wish to speak now or, so you're right? We do speak about five and a half minutes. Is there any other debate? Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd love to speak. We don't really have much to say, I would be pleased to know because I feel it's all been very well covered. Just to say that we felt it was very important to add the DUCs amendment in to this motion and it's come at a great time because in fact MPs will be voting on this Thursday, first of March, so it's Wednesday. So I'm not sure how quickly things can progress, but if we could write to them before then, that would be great. Thank you.
Councillor, if you get a chance to speak anyway, if there's any further debates, if you are one of the are one of the, summat.
Well, I just wanted to reassure councillor Aydi, I mean, I don't want to stop him making this a nation of Scottish opponents, but I think the, we, I appreciate that sometimes motions get obliterated by the majority party. You worked around, or maybe you worked for a while, and we used to have to turn our heads and see the, the, the savaging of any motion by waving over a gentron to the wall just behind you, and that was a terribly pretty activity. The purpose of this wording, from a discussion that we had, a very busy group meeting, was that, given the spirit of the ten thousand pounds that was raised in this building, that those members of our group that have been active as fundraisers thought that if we're going to have an event in this building, then it should, a bit like the way that the snowy farm are more in the turdell, that in the spirit of it, it should be an activity in this building which will also enable sponsors to be raised, so yes, there can be an act of generosity by the city, and we can work out how that can be delivered to thank the many people that you know that have trudged to Calais, gone into France, gone much further degrees than beyond, and have done a lot of work back here in all sorts of ways, so we're not being stingy, we just felt that in opening up a discussion, we'd like to hear from Cam Craig and C R R C, what do they want?
Councillor Aydi, if you have a microphone, please approve the original motion.
I should be fully agree, Mr Mayor. I'm delighted with the sound of the debate. I kept quiet, because I think it's very late, everything's been said, everything's written. Thank you.
So now we move to the vote on the amendment. All those in favour, please show.
Okay, right, so that's, sorry, that's nineteen twenty twenty-one, that's thirty-four. Thank you.
So the motion as amended is carried. Thank you. Agenda items eleven twelve, there are no agenda items eleven twelve. The next meeting of the council is on the twenty, November. Please take all of your rubbish out of the council chamber, please, this evening, and leave the nice, easy space. Good night, and say goodnight.